Good evening. The June 26, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Myriad Planning Commission is called to order. Would the Secretary please call for a roll call to determination of a quorum?
Thank you. Chair Harlan, Vice Chair Vrooman.
Here.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Here.
Commissioner Lapaglia.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Let the record be flat. All members are present with the exception of Chair Harlan with an excused absent.
Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Wojciech, could you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Please rise. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wojciech. Let's moving on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Secretary or Commissioners, are there any changes or proposed changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'd like to call for a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion to approve.
And I will second it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Lapaglia and second by Commissioner Fisher. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Vrooman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to public comments. At this time, we'll take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business, which does not relate to any item listed on the agenda or the consent calendar. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Seeing none.
With that, we're now moving on to the approval of the minutes. Approval of minutes. We need to approve the minutes of the June 12, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting as presented. Madam Secretary, the members of the public requesting to speak on the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Chair. We do not have any members of the public requesting to speak.
Okay. Having none, I'd like to call for a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting.
And I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Fisher and a second by Commissioner Lapaglia. Madam Secretary, would you call for a roll call vote, please?
Vice Chair Vrooman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lapaglia.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-1.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing. The public hearing is the Sixth Code Updates or MCA-2023-00003 to the City's Development Code for the purpose of revising and updating Chapters 16.18, 16.22, 16.30, 16.34, 16.38, 16.42, 16.44, 16.52, 16.56, 16.66, 16.60, 16.68, 16.70, 16.72, 16.73, 16.78, 16.90, and 16.110. Are there any members of the Planning Commission that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Tonight, we have Chris Tracy, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department, Planning Division, with the presentation.
Thank you, Carl. Real quick, so tonight, I'll be going over our Six Code Updates to our Development Code. This is within Chapter 16 of our municipal code. The goal for these updates are to clarify standards so that are also for our standards to be compliant with new state laws and are drafted in a manner that are more responsive to our customer base. We try to bring these updates forward every 12 to 18 months. The last comprehensive update ended in 2022. For reference, we held a Planning Commission workshop back on December 13 of last year to go over this in a workshop format. Prior to that, we presented this to the Development Advisory Group, also known as DAG, back on November 30, 2023. First here on your screen, we're proposing some updates to hazardous material storage. Minor updates here lie within 16.18 in consultation with Myriad Fire and Rescue. There were some outdated protocols on noticing. It referenced the Uniform Building Code, which is no longer applicable. And also, there's some updates to notification to Riverside County Department of Environmental Health, too, in there. Next, we're proposing some updates here to our solid waste recycling material storage. This will fix an existing error. So currently, if you have a multifamily project that is 16 to 25 units, it notes 48 square feet. This should be 96 square feet. The lower tier before that is the 48 square feet. So there was just redundancy there. And then also, we're updating two tables for consistency with the rest of the section. Next on your screen here are some updates to our fencing materials. We're proposing minor updates to 1622 for the installation of new barbed wire and razor wire due to safety concerns and aesthetics. We're looking at providing a carve-out exception for existing fencing to remain and also having an exception for agriculture and livestock operations as those require that type of fencing for their operations. It should be noted, there's other materials and techniques that are out there, such as tubular steel or wrought iron fence with spikes, so that same level of security can be achieved in another manner. On your screen here is a minor correction here for construction noise. We're missing Saturdays for construction noise currently, and this has been an issue in the past for noise complaints when there's noise issues on Saturdays, and code enforcement hasn't been able to enforce that clearly. Next on your screen is we're currently lacking parking quantities for produce agriculture uses. We did look at some other cities to kind of develop these standards. We've been receiving a number of inquiries lately on these types of uses, so it'll help us with project review in a more concise manner. For produce stands, we're looking at proposing a minimum of at least three onsite parking spaces as a minimum for agricultural processing, one per 1,500 square feet of area. For equestrian facilities, one per three corrals plus one horse trailer space for every 10 corrals, and then plus two for a caretaker's unit with that. So we'll have some parameters when we have those types of uses presented. Next here, we're just proposing some very minor updates under the SIGN code, just addressing some minor typos in the table and table renumbering. And then also, we're cross-referencing the innovation zone with the office and business park there for those standards. On your screen here, slaughtering rendering facilities. We're going to table this, and I'll explain a little bit more later, and I'll go to the next one here. So residential accessory structures, we're proposing just consistent setback criteria for both single-family and multifamily zones. We're clarifying criteria with guests, living quarters, and removal of referencing ADUs, which are separately defined. I did consult with our building official on developing these standards, so it's consistent with the California Building Code and also the fire code as well. We did talk to our fire official as well. Also, we're going to be proposing updates to our cargo containers as accessory use. We did some updates a couple of years ago on that, and there's been some question on landscape screening methods, so we're just clarifying that landscape screening shall be provided on the visible portions from the public right of way. If you have a giant site, it probably doesn't make sense if you have a 10-acre site and it's the middle of the site, and no one's going to be able to see it, as it'll be very isolated. Next on your screen here are just some minor updates to ADUs. The state legislature recently just did some consolidation with the government code to just consolidate that under one section. It's some very minor referencing. We just want to be consistent if we get a project into review so that we're correctly referencing the proper section, so we don't have any issues later with confusion. Next here, telecommunication facilities. We just have a minor discrepancy there. We're just going to be addressing that under non-residential zoning districts and then also cross-referencing the innovation zone. Next on your screen is auto sales. Per Economic Development Department's request, we're providing some minor updates to have a simplified description for vehicle dealerships and also vehicle storage facilities. There's going to be some clarification for vehicle storage, that screening is only for the non-vehicle storage components and not for the vehicles themselves. On your screen here are just some minor updates for residential wedding facilities. We have a 4.5 acre versus five acre inconsistency currently in the code. This has caused some confusion in the past on being able to cite a potential location. So we're just, the correct quantity should be five acres. That was the original intention, so we're just going to be cleaning that up. And then also here, report of commission actions to the City Council. It was presented by the City Clerk's Office as there's some logistical and lack of resources to be able to provide this type of report. There's other resources now with technology that that report could be obtained, so we're recommending that that portion be removed from the code. Next here, at City Management's request, we're updating inconsistent standards with our appeal processes in terms of timelines and processes, this will assist the City Clerk and also code enforcement with the processing of appeal applications. We had different timeframes throughout the code, so the goal here is we have a consistent review for everything. Next on your screen here are just some final map updates. So it designates the city engineer with the approval authority from the City Council for the processing of final track maps. This streamlines the review for processing of final maps for our project applicants. This is consistent with city industry standards and also Subdivision Map Act as well. Lastly, here with the updates, we're proposing a new definition for gross floor area. This definition is needed to help with project review and for consistency with our objective design standards. Also, as an industry standard, the measurement would be taken from the outside surfaces of exterior walls. And then pivoting here, we wanted to present this question to the Planning Commission. So four years ago, the city replaced the administrative hearing officer process with a director's review process under the Fourth Code Updates. The idea there was to streamline the processing of development and use permits. It provided the framework for a public hearing to be held at Planning Commission if elevated by the director or requested by the public on a certain item. Currently, we have a two-step process to facilitate public notice. What we have first is a notice of intent to approve or deny, and then also, the second part of that is a notice of approval with the SEQA appeal. So the public will be, is currently being notified two times on a project that goes through this process, so there's an opportunity for input if there's a need. On your screen here are the current types of applications which fall under this process. We have development plan permits. This is non-administerial permits that are under, you know, the upgrading activities that trigger SEQA review typically. And then the next kind of grouping is minor conditional use permits, alcoholic beverage sales, bulk vending machines with small collection facilities, electric vehicle charging stations, hazardous material storage, indoor commercial recreation, indoor vehicle sales, outdoor display and storage, outdoor dining and seating locations, wireless communication facilities, non-commercial wind energy conversion system projects, and lastly, residential wedding event facilities. And then the last category that's under this umbrella process is tentative residential parcel maps. So these are your smaller subdivision maps with four or less parcels identified. And then just some questions for the Planning Commission as we get to the discussion portion at the end. Is the Planning Commission comfortable with this current approach? Are there certain permits activities that need to be elevated to the Commission at the first review? So we just wanted to run this all by you. And in closing, staff recommends the following actions. Provide a recommendation to the City Council finding that the Six Code Updates are exempt from SEQA in accordance with Class 3215061B3. Receive any public comments. Provide direction on any potential director determination updates if desired to staff, and we'll incorporate that in the draft ordinance. And then fourth, adopt Attachment 1 resolution as noted here on your screen. And then also, I need to add that there's two items that we need to have a little bit more legal review. The first one being the vehicle signage restriction at home occupation permit locations, and the second one is the slaughtering rendering activity language. So we're going to be discussing that, those two, a little bit more internally and with legal staff, but that's just something to note right now. And I'll be happy to answer any questions or go through anything specifically. I can go back to those items to help facilitate that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. At this time, we'll take questions from Commission members to staff, and I'll start to my right. Mr. Fisher, do you have anything, any questions of staff?
The two that you just mentioned, are they included in what we're approving tonight?
They're in the draft language, yes. So we would ask you to preclude those two items from the recommendation at this time.
So you would make the motion excluding those two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. SEQA, tell me about why it's exempt from SEQA.
Well, typically, what we're doing here is we're updating processes and project, you know, reviews. We're not introducing any new uses that haven't been analyzed before. So it's, under the SEQA world, you can, this is a typical update that falls under an exemption.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Chris. Can you just slide back to Slide 1 and 2, or Page 1, Page 2? I just wanted to refresh my memory, then I've got some questions on Page 3. Okay, so one was just the introduction. Okay, so let's go to Page 3. Hazardous material storage updates. Is this for, I would assume this is like for commercial and industrial properties only?
Let me go to the code redline at Attachment 3 of your booklet there.
And like what you're presenting here on the screen, is this the update, or you're telling us there's minor updates in Section 1618?
Yeah, it's just kind of a high-level overview, but I'm looking at the section right now. It's on Page 3 of Attachment 3. So what we're doing is proposing to just update the referencing of the California Building and Fire Code. Currently, it references the Uniform Building Code, which is an outdated code section, and also including the Riverside County Department of Environmental Health for review. It isn't specific to residential or commercial. It does require, so a minor conditional use permits required for this type of activity.
So we're clarifying that these codes apply, whereas the code didn't call these out before correctly, I think.
Like the code was outdated, so new California standards, and we're just updating our city policies?
Yeah. In consultation with our Myriad Fire and Rescue over there nodding, that's why we're putting that in there, making sure we have the right references here for when these projects come through.
Okay. Do we have any idea when that was updated?
The last update on this stuff was probably back in 1997, or 90, somewhere around then, when we adopted the code.
Yeah, so our code is like more than 20 years out of date on the.
Oh, okay.
So just making it up to speed with the, and the fire code's being updated regularly.
Yeah, I feel like that would be happening on the regular.
Yeah. The building code's being updated every couple of years, fire's working on updating every three years, so, yeah, there's been a number of updates since then. We're just trying to make sure it's properly cross-referenced.
Okay. All right. Let's go over to Page 4, the trash enclosures. So explain this to me, to fix an existing error with 48 square feet belonging or being referenced for a 16 to 25 unit? So that needs to be 96 square feet?
That's correct. So the tier before that, which is, it's a smaller range, sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but that references 48 square feet also. So once you're in that upper tier to 16 to 25, it should be double.
Yeah. And is there a certain amount of trash enclosures per door in these kind of developments?
Yeah, there's a, Commissioner Lapaglia, for example, like a multifamily development, the more units you have, there's a, I believe by our development code, there's a certain amount of waste facilities that you'll need to have that.
Sure.
Another driver for this is the organics laws. We just don't simply have enough space today to organics, recycling, and refuse. So this does allow a business or homeowner to have additional space that we can accommodate those different waste streams.
Okay.
And I would also add, this is an area the state has been making changes, and if we're talking about decades, in the last couple of decades, they've made a lot of changes. And as Jared was alluding to, there's more bins required now, so for these larger multifamily projects, we need more space for all the different bins.
Yeah, no, makes sense. You know, even at our small company, we're required to have recycling now and all that.
And just extra, the stormwater regulations have been a big proponent of the Clean Water Act. So if you see how these are designed, they have to have a containment area on the inside, so if you're having organics and other things, you don't want fluids and other things spilling outside of that area. So I'd say stormwater regulations have had a big influence on this.
Okay, and this referenced specifically multifamily projects, 16 to 25 unit. So this does not apply to, you know, rural residential or anything like that?
No, it's just in our multifamily development standards. And I think our MAX, the MAX on Jefferson Project, I think has five or six, you know, types of locations like this, just for comparison purposes. It's 160 units.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see, that was four. Let's go over to Page 6 on the noise. I think this was for maybe construction work on Saturdays. Operating or causing the operation of tools or equipment using construction, drilling, repair, alteration, or demolition work between weekday hours of 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So what is, the missing Saturdays for operating hours as it relates to construction noise? Can you elaborate a little bit more on that? What is the current code and what are we changing it to?
We don't have a current standard. That's been the issue.
So there's nothing for Saturdays? It's just kind of like a per case?
It was an oversight. When the code was drafted, it should have included noise standards for every day of the week. Somehow, this was what was written in our code. They didn't put Saturdays in there.
Okay.
So we've had people challenge us and say, well, there's no noise standard for Saturdays. So we're just, we're getting every day of the week in the code now.
What is, what is the noise? Okay, so Saturday will match what's allowed on Monday through Friday?
It'll match Sundays and holidays.
Sundays and holidays, okay. What's the difference between Sundays and holidays and Monday through Friday?
You can, you can work between 8 and, let's see, weekday hours of 8:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Ah, there's a typo there. Also, I'm gonna, I'll address that, too. But it looks like you can, you know, you can have operating hours during the middle of the day, essentially, whereas on Sundays and holidays, it's precluded.
Yeah, and some of that's in federal law. It's actually not even state law. We're preempted by federal law that there's certain construction activities that are not allowed to occur on Sundays and holidays. That's national.
And so, okay, so we're going to make every Saturday as if it's a Sunday or a holiday? So it's going to limit a lot of construction allowance?
Pursuant to what's in our code, we were going to categorize Saturdays the same as Sundays. That's the same, I would say, at every jurisdiction I've ever worked at, it's the same way they look at it. It's the weekend. You do Saturdays and Sundays. What I was talking about before was that there's federal law that preempts what we do anyway for Sundays and holidays, but we do have our own standards for Saturdays and Sundays that are the same if we do it this way.
Well, that seems, I mean, that's, I don't know the code, I don't know the code or have the code in front of me, but that seems pretty harsh, being in a construction company that sometimes has to operate on Saturdays to keep up with our demand. Of course, being aware of the noise and, you know, noise pollution that we put off, Sundays and holidays are like a no-fly zone, like absolutely have to understand that like we would never work on a Sunday or a holiday. But Saturdays, I think, need to show some leniency. There's a lot of projects in our town that work Saturdays to meet schedule, catch up on projects, especially in the wintertime when it's raining and whatnot. I do agree that there are some activities, there are some activities that even we perform in my own company that are noisy and that we really try not to do during Saturdays, but I think there should be some leniency with Saturdays. I've always kind of thought it was like a per case. I feel like we always get permission directly from the city inspector if certain activities are allowed, and he either says, you know, yes or no. So I don't really know how to write that code or like exactly what Sunday and holiday represents, but I think we need to have some more leniency for some Saturday work. That's really going to put a big bind in some projects.
Chris, can you elaborate on how Saturday's getting put in there? Like to, is it, is it being plumped in the same as the weekday hours, or is it the same as the Sundays and holidays?
Same as Sundays and holidays.
So is that the way it's going to read?
Yes, but we can.
What is, what is Sunday and holiday? Do you have that available?
I don't think we have the holidays defined in there. I would imagine it would be government-observed holidays.
It would be the city holidays.
Yeah.
Isn't the way this is wording, or at any time on Sundays or holidays, it confuses me, the verbiage that's in here right now. Are you saying that on Sundays and holidays, there can be no work?
That's how it's currently drafted.
Yeah, so we can't have Saturday like that.
So then you're including Saturday as being no work?
That's the direction I've received up to this point.
Doesn't seem.
What do you think about that?
Doesn't seem right.
No.
Because I think in construction, we do have to keep up, you do have to do a Saturday sometimes just to keep up with your schedule the way it is. So I don't think it can be related to a Sunday and holiday.
Right, but, you know, like I said earlier, agreed that certain pieces of equipment produce certain decibels that are, you know, a noise pollutant, and I think that those can be limited, especially, maybe even limited to certain hours on Saturday. But, you know, some average moderately quiet, moderately noisy, whatever, equipment operating, especially like hand labor at construction sites, I think should be allowed.
Since we're on that topic, I was going to bring that up, too, but, so a typical scenario that I would see that's very common is someone having their pool dug in their yard, right? So they have, or concrete being poured, they have a cement truck showing up on Saturday. It's very commonplace. So would, would code then be expected to say, hey, stop the pourness of concrete, quit digging your pool? I think there probably needs to be some other considerations or maybe outline, is it major constructions of an apartment complex versus someone doing home construction?
So again, that, this kind of bleeds into a different discussion, so that's, a lot of that's covered by federal law. You can work on your own house anytime you want. It's really about if you're hiring people and they're coming to your property and doing work. So you can, so you can work on your own kitchen, you know, whatever, on Sunday or on a holiday.
But digging a pool and pouring concrete.
You're paying someone to do it.
You're paying somebody, that's different, right? There's a permit.
Right.
So that's governed by building code, federal law. That's more of a different discussion, and that's already dealt with. This is just in the Development Code as it relates to construction noise that we're permitting on just the permits that we handle in the Development Code. Building code and federal law covers like everything else. There's tons of stuff, obviously, that doesn't come to the Commission, right, that we issue permits for all the time, like you're saying. A pool permit, that's a different discussion. This is really about construction noise of projects that would be coming here and within the purview of the Development Code.
But would it make sense for, to the, to a member of the public that's viewing our code as they're reading it online, should we, should we at least mention something, you know, with those exceptions that you just mentioned?
I think those would be.
Those would be carved out in the code specifically?
We can look at, it might even refer to it in the front of the section. I don't know if it does in the noise section. We're doing a noise ordinance update this next year, so, but it's something we're going to look at. So, but I would defer to Chris. It doesn't seem unreasonable to me, though. I'd say just city planner perspective, to have the same weekdays and Saturdays, if that's the Commission's preference, that doesn't seem like an unreasonable recommendation from the Commission if you'd like to make that your recommendation.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, if that seems reasonable, I think that would, I think that would be much more reasonable than having it reflect the same as Sundays and holidays.
Commissioner Lapaglia, so the noise volumes of the property lines are 45 dba. That's this conversation.
Right.
Very, very little threshold. But you made a point earlier. I don't think this excludes work on Saturdays as long as it's below that threshold. So there's a lot of other work activities that developers tend to do. Once you've framed up your building... Once you've framed up your building and you have the sides in, you can do a lot of interior work at that point. But you do make a good point about wet winters and how there's a reduction in time for developers. So we'll look into this a little bit closer, but it really has to do with respecting the property line boundary for the noise volumes. Most equipment, hammers, loaders, graders, those things can be at 75 to 90 to 120 decibels, just on a normal averaging.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm thinking more like that, like more like running heavy equipment, which, you know, at property lines across the street, you know, you're right, 45 decibels is very low, right? We're 45 decibels right here. The wind blowing outside is 80 decibels, I bet. Backup alarms is like a critical thing, right? You have to have backup alarms for OSHA, but those things, you know, can be, can be piercing sometimes, 100 decibels.
Yeah.
So, you know, but the wet winters and things like that, that more so is going to slow down dirt operations, grading operations, which obviously puts entire schedules behind. I mean, we had so much rain this past winter, you know, there's a, there's a number of grading operations in our city that are behind. So if it's not unreasonable to have Saturdays reflect the same as our current Monday through Friday, city planner, if you think that's reasonable, then.
I think for, for the commission, I'm just, I'm just providing a thought. Staff can still have our own position that we take forward to the city council, but I think what you're saying doesn't sound unreasonable to me for a position that the commission could take. And that could be your recommendation is that you'd like to lump it in with the weekdays?
Okay.
This is only related to this section, which is the 163130, which is act's deemed violation of the noise chapter. And it's only this first section of it, talking about this operation of tools and equipment. And as Jared mentioned, we still have, just for people, I guess, maybe who are watching this today or in the future, we still have noise standards at the property line. We're just talking about when these, these specific uses could be operating and when it would be a violation.
And if it helps the commission, there is an exemption for the entire chapter, including this section, for noise sources associated with minor maintenance of residential real property, provided the activities take place between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on any day except Sunday, or between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Sunday. So there is a, a separate carve-out for the residential homeowner.
Right, right.
Doing work on their property.
Okay, so that would, that would, that would cover like what Vice Chair Vreman said about building a pool, pouring concrete, having things like that show up on Saturday?
That would not fall under that exception. That would not be minor maintenance of residential property by the homeowner, right? That would be construction activities that would fall under the one that you're talking about now. But if you went out there with your leaf blower or your lawn mower, or you were hammering some nails in your garage, those type of activities are not part of what's considered here.
Okay, understood.
And my suggestion with that is maybe a similar language with an exception for people that are having their pool dug on Saturdays or those type, because that does happen. You know, nobody really calls on it that much, but, but I think that would, you know, for someone to call the police or code enforcement, hey, we got a violation here, but it's not specifically called out. I think it just, the reasonableness and common sense to it.
Yeah. And, you know, to the, to my fellow commissioners, I feel that, you know, trust me, I don't like working on Saturdays. I don't like working with my guys on Saturdays, but sometimes you have to in order to catch up and meet schedules. So I don't think we should put a large restriction on working on Saturdays on these construction sites. We could maybe kick it back an hour instead of a 7:00 a.m. start, make it an 8:00 a.m. start, and cut it off at, at 3:00 o'clock or something. But I don't think it's right to reflect the same standards as Sundays and holidays, because I think those, no one should work on Sundays and holidays, in my opinion, so.
And only because we're on this topic, but when we come back to it, so I'm gonna interject. I would suggest maybe clarifying the definition of what holidays are. I think you'd mentioned city holidays, and I'll give you a conflict. Columbus Day, courts are closed, counties closed, cities open. And so when you just, you throw it out there, what holidays do we mean?
Maybe federally recognized holiday, every day.
I'm fairly sure that's defined in the code. I think it's in the beginning of the development code. I don't think it's in this title. I think it's up in the first, like in section, chapter one or two or three, it talks about what holidays are city holidays. It's already defined in the code.
It is section 1.16.010, holidays observed by the city.
Then maybe in this section, just say, city recognized holidays.
12 different dates? Well, 11 plus anything declared by the mayor by proclamation.
Right.
Okay. So I guess for clarity for tonight and for moving this forward, because we do have a direction from that this needs to move forward, my recommendation for, for the, for the planning commission's consideration would be, if you want to just lump in as your recommendation the Saturdays, you could just say the same hours as weekday hours for the Saturdays in this section, which matches what we have below. You guys don't have the whole code section in front of you, but if you look below, it gets into mobile equipment and stationary equipment. And this, it says daily except Sundays in those sections, so that's including Saturdays. There's no, there's no breakout of different hours.
Okay.
It's just the same daily. So if, if you wanted to do it that way, that would be a clear, you know, we could move that forward with the commission's recommendation, clearly, I think. And then if staff chooses to present our position as well and we go to council, that's fine, but we could weigh that or just present the commission's recommendation.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, when we make a motion, if we make, if we get to a motion on that, let's be sure to include that. So that's page six, or four, or, yeah, that's page six. Let's go to page seven.
It's okay.
Let's see, parking quantities, locations. So I'm just curious, does this, does this include small operations? You know, you have, you've got like candy strawberries that, you know, has like a pop-up shop around town.
Yeah.
You know, I hope this doesn't categorize something like that. I feel like there's others. That one just comes in my mind right now, where they are required.
Right now, we process temporary use permits for those, you know, those pop-up stands, but we don't have any parking quantity to condition, or not condition, I should say, refer back to code implementation, you know, as a minimum amount.
Yeah, one thing to consider is that often you'll see these right off the roadway. They're temporary.
What is?
A lot of these uses like a fruit stand, like a strawberry stand, they're usually typically right off of a busy roadway. People come in, they're very quick, grab your stuff for five bucks and you're out of there. It's important because of how the proximity, the right-of-way, that we have some organization of those spaces. They always have one employee at least, that'll be one space. And sometimes they have customers coming in at peak times, like when they're coming home from work or at lunchtime. I think it's really important from a safety perspective to delineate parking spaces, because otherwise people will park anywhere as they pull off into the driveway for these stands. Sometimes they're on city properties, sometimes you'll see them like in the triangle area. And honestly, a lot of them have DG or other components that's not the safest type of environment. So trying to find common ground that we believe that if you instruct the public to have a parking space, they'll use it. If not, they kind of just park anywhere on the property, and that could become a site distance or other safety issue. So I just, I'll leave you with that, that we're not trying to pick on the small businesses, but those businesses can have a impact, if you will, if we're not careful.
So you do a temporary permit, let's just use candy strawberries for this example. You do a temporary permit each time he has to, you know, shit strawberry season, he pops up in his shops, right? What kind of requirements would a, would an operation like that be required to have for their parking?
Well, right now, we don't have any standards to refer back to, so that's been a challenge. I would also add to Jared's point, the parking area would have to be positioned in a, in a spot where it's outside of visibility area to motorists, so you don't have any blind spots when someone's like getting out of there. So there's definitely a safety component.
So this would just require a minimum of three spaces?
Yeah.
That's it? So it's, that's the starting point, yeah.
That answers my question. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm good with that. Let's go to page nine. Oh, this is the one that you're gonna come back to?
Yeah, we're gonna re, we're gonna explore this further with legal and internally as well.
Okay, thank you. Page 10. Okay, residential accessory structures. Clarifying criteria with guest living quarters and removal referencing to ADUs, which are separately defined. Landscape screening method. So, so like in these pictures here, you have like, you know, this, this kind of like trellis gazebo shade structure here. In, in like a residential home, I guess we're talking SF1. Like what would, what is the offset now and what, what would it be proposed to be? What are we changing?
So right now, it is, just looking, so gazebo, sides and rear, three feet right now is what we require. And then we're just clarifying on, we're not changing that setback with this update. We're just clarifying that it's to the furthest projection. That was, I was discussing this with the building official, just for that clarity on that example.
To the furthest projection, so that would be like, like how the roof has a slight overhang?
So if there's a roof overhang, there is an.
Closest point, versus, versus like, you know, the risers or something?
Right, so there's no issues with fire code or building code separation.
Okay, and it's three feet right now?
Mm-hmm.
And we're proposing to change what? I'm sorry.
Just clarify language for, for this projection. For barbecue, stationary barbecue areas, propane tanks, three feet is the current standard. For non-high-fire zone areas, for high-fire zones, they need to contact Doug's shop to get what the, the current California fire code standards are. So, because we do have some new standards with that. So that's another issue, another item that will be.
So that's, Brad, and that's for propane tanks? Would that include natural gas lines?
I believe so. Fire pits are in there. Yep. And if you're also within a high-fire zone, which is going to be a lot of the city.
Yeah. Okay, last one is page 14. What was this? Okay, residential wedding facilities, correction of a 4.5 acre versus five acre inconsistency. So in some parts of the language, it says 4.5 and others it refers to as five?
That's correct.
So anyone with a, with a, I mean, just curious, anyone with a five-acre parcel of land or in a residential area can host a wedding facility or?
They have to come in through a, they have to do a minor conditional use permit process.
Right.
And, but the minimums, the minimum area needed to get, to process that permit is five acres technically, but some places it references 4.5.
Okay, okay, cool. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Vice Chair. And I just want to remind you to, if we can all come back to page six for that, you know, Saturday operation if we go to motion. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Commissioner Poychek.
Hey, thanks, Chris, for this. My first question is, can you walk me through the process a little bit from the standpoint? I understand when the law changes, you need to update the code to reflect the changes in the law. But it sounds like there's also incidences where something happens out there and you read the code and you're like, oh, my gosh, it doesn't address this. Can you walk me through that process? Is it something that you guys kind of keep a tab on throughout the year and then we come today and correct it all, or how's that work?
Yeah, so we, we keep a running list of things that need to be addressed. They come up through code enforcement reviews or an inquiry from the public that might have a new idea. Also, you know, every year, the state passes 1,000 new laws, so, you know, keeping up with that. It definitely, you know, we try to keep our code as responsive and as accurate as possible on a yearly basis. So it's kind of a combination of all those things. And then sometimes it's requests from like economic development, if something's not working in terms of siding a specific business or something of that nature.
Okay. On, on the produce stands, they have to have the three onsite parking spaces. Is that designated somewhere in the code, the size of the space is how they're gonna be marked? Or is it just, how's that work in application?
We could, as part of the temporary use permit review process, we can look at that site-specific criteria. It's, it's something that I guess would be handled on a case-by-case basis. We don't have, the thing, the problem today is we don't have any standard for a minimum number of spaces to be there. So it's hard, you know, just approaching it from that perspective to start with. But I think we would be consulting, you know, with our traffic engineering people if needed, if it's a really busy intersection. You know, and just a look out on a case-by-case basis.
And I would just add, Commissioner, that half the sites already have striped parking spaces. If you notice, our Calooc City property by the fire station, north of the park, you'll see the strawberry stand there a couple of times a year. It has striped spaces.
Right.
There's other sites where we've allowed chalk at nine feet by 18. So we are supportive because it is temporary use and it's not a stormwater issue or site distance issue. We try to work with those applicants because a farmer has a very low threshold. You know, a strawberry farmer, they're driving five hours to pick up strawberries, driving it back at night and pie making a couple of bucks on each one. So we know that that type of customer can't go and pave and do a whole new parking lot for us. So where it makes sense, and it's a very temporary use, we try to meet them halfway on that. But if it's a permanent use, they gotta go through the whole rigmarole.
Sure, thank you for that, Jared. And then on the Saturday thing, I don't have an issue with, with the Saturday, you know, having the work happen on a Saturday. I think though, you know, I'm a homeowner, I do like my solace at some point. And I can see this kind of go the other way and get abused a little bit where construction's going on every Saturday. So I don't know if there's a happy medium that would state some of the effect that, you know, the Saturdays are okay for X consecutive Saturdays in a row, and then at that point, they have to. I don't, anywhere in the code is already a method where they can apply for some kind of exemption if they need be? Or is there any process in place where they can work additional Saturdays or whatever and say, hey, this is why we need to work these Saturdays? Because as a homeowner, at some point, it's gonna drive me nuts. Right now, and this is not my home, but in my office, we're right next to the project that's going on at Old Town. They're taking down the hillside west of Old Town, Temecula, you can see from the freeway. That's all day long, every day, and they're just in the grading process right now. And I'm thinking, okay, when the grading stops, what's the next noise that's coming in? And I know a year from now, it's gonna be noisy. And I know that's office versus residential, but this could easily happen next to a resident. So it seems like at some point, we should have, provide the homeowner some solace, or am I, am I looking at this wrong?
Just to share an example, Commissioner, there may be a variance allowance, and I'll, I'll cut to the chase. There are times where it might be in August and you can't pour concrete at 11:00 a.m. You gotta pour it at 3:00 a.m., so it hardens in time. Now, at 3:00 a.m., you're gonna include lights, so the workers can see what they're doing. But it would make sense, right? Like if you're in Ramona or in this area, you're not pouring concrete at noon in the summertime. You gotta let it cure. So there are times where if we look at the offsite property uses and allowances, there might be other ways to use a variance process to do that, because that should be a one-time. I agree with you. Residents in particular, on Saturdays and Sundays, do expect things to be a little bit calmer. Monday through Friday, there's an expectation that things can be a little bit louder. But I think we can follow up and look into that, is, is there a special request that can be facilitated by going above the hours of operation or the noise volumes? Usually in those situations, what I've done is I've worked with those specific property owners next door to see if they'd be in support of that. And we would want to know what the hours are and what the noise volumes are to expect on that one. But I think we can follow up to see, is there a specific tool that we can allow an exception to that?
I just hate to see a carte blanche Saturday without the ability to rein it in a little bit.
Yeah, and I don't disagree. Like, like, again, I don't think really anyone wants to work Saturdays, especially with the rate of labor and the rate of equipment and things like that. But I think it needs to be at least an option for them to work. You know, and the one thing I want to add to is that typically, construction projects, they are temporary, right? It's not like, you know, it's not like you're living next to this thing for decades or whatever. Although your project you're talking about, that's gonna be a long one in Temecula. So I understand a little bit of frustration there. But, you know, these projects that, you know, the grading permit or the permit to build is a year, year and a half, you know, it's just gonna help get the project done faster versus having, having the problem Monday through Friday for, you know, a duration longer. But, you know, I do agree too. I mean, I don't think it should be open range. Every single project in Marietta should be allowed to work Saturday full tilt. So I just don't really know how to like satisfy, you know, the limitation, other than it's like a request or something or like a per-case basis, but that would be a, that would be a, that would be a challenge.
Yeah, I kind of like the variance idea, where you get so many Saturdays, but if they need more, they can apply for a variance and kind of state their case to the city and say, this is why we need more Saturdays. Anyway, that's it. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I agree with, with my colleagues here, and I, I do like the idea of the variance, and also, what Mr. LaPaglia brought up, about maybe the hours might be a little bit different than, than typical weekday hours, maybe a later start, earlier finish. I don't think that there's, if we're going to allow Saturdays, or whether, through the code, every Saturday, or through a variance type of thing, it should be, the hour should be a little bit more limited than a typical weekday. Just my suggestion, and, and my feelings. Back to the produce stands, Halloween pumpkins and Christmas trees, do, do they fall under that, that ordinance? Their produce sales are somewhat kind of loosely related? Would you, do you need to add those type of things into the code specifically? Or would, would that just be kind of a catch-all? What do you think?
I don't think produce stands and Halloween or Christmas trees is the same. I think we define holiday sales in a different way, I believe. I think it has its own standards.
Would you want those same parking?
I think it already has its own standards, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, elsewhere.
Some of its uses are growing larger and larger every year, so, we'll, we'll double-check that, because it's, it's more of a city operation than anything else.
I just see it as maybe whatever you allow for one, it should be the same, it should be somewhat uniform, whatever it is, I just thought, just a suggestion.
Yeah, those are separate categories, if I remember, in our table, our use table. So, we can definitely look at that a little further.
Yeah, if you have, whatever the parking that you're requiring, it'd seem it would, it's very like, and a lot of times, they're seasonal, right? So, you know, Gary or Kenny's strawberry stand is, you know, not there, and then, next thing you know, they're selling pumpkins at the same location, and then, a few months later, they're selling Christmas trees. So, it seems, if you're going to have this for one use at the same location, wouldn't you have the same type of standard for the other?
I think with the pumpkin and Christmas tree lots, there's, they scale up a lot more, because you have a lot more area that's used typically.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's somewhat different, I would, I would agree with Chris, it's not, they're really not similar. The, the produce stands, as Jared was alluding to, typically, just a couple people in and out of there quickly, and we just, the temporary use permit is usually for a much shorter timeframe. Like, the Christmas tree lot is a longer timeframe, there's a lot more people going there, and they have other things going on. You've got the jumpy, you know, that you can see from the freeway.
Some do.
Horseback rides and.
Yeah, there's other things going on, so we do have different standards for those, they're not really the same.
Okay. You mentioned timelines, and I think, back at the workshop, I think I suggested the time. In the code, what did you decide to include? Calendar days, business days? What, you know, when you say days, it, you know, for days of appeal, those type of things like that? So, what did, what did you finally land on?
Sorry, I'm going to have to, give me one second here.
Doesn't matter to me personally, I just thought, you know, for consistency purposes, and, you know, should be the same.
I think it is. But, but while Chris is looking that up, I did want to clarify one thing, on the, going back to the noise, there's already a section in there that we can, the director has the ability to modify the process there to approve, so we don't need a variance process. It's, it's further down in the section, so we've already got that coverage. And then, I also wanted to mention, looking at that code section further, it already, we're just talking about the first paragraph, further down, as it gets into each type of equipment, and the noise standard with each type of equipment, there are already daily standards. And then, it just says, except Sundays and legal holidays. So, just in that one paragraph, where we're trying to make the cleanup change, the problem is, it says weekday hours, that's the problem. It should just say daily, if, if you want to make that the commission's recommendation. That would align with the rest of the section. And we're talking about noise standards at the property line. The, the uses can still occur, they occur today. People can do construction on a Saturday, it's just a matter of what noise standard applies at the property line. There are different noise standards between the different days, that's the difference. That's, we're not talking about whether or not someone can or can't do construction on Saturday or Sunday, because they can. It's about the noise levels at the property line and the standards. Because the, if you look at that section, there are different standards depending on the day. And, and the confusing part, as we, we've been talking about ad nauseam, that first paragraph, the problem is, I, I would think it was probably an error, it says weekday, and it should have probably just said daily.
And weekday is specifically defined as Monday through Friday.
Sure. So, if you look at this section, on the second paragraph, the third line down, it says weekday. Everywhere else in that section, it says daily, except, yeah, so that was the, I think it was an oversight.
So, if in our motion, if we made a motion, we could substitute weekday for daily, and then maybe clarify holidays as city holidays.
Yeah.
And that would, that would clean things up.
That sounds reasonable.
And do we need to clean up the, the 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM typo?
No, that's in, that's elsewhere, let's see, I'm looking at those code sections, further down, it says 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then it says, yeah, and then it says same thing, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Yeah, well. 8:00 PM seems incredibly late, even Monday through Friday.
It's, it's already in the code, further down, when we're talking about different types of equipment. And I would also add, as we kind of were talking about earlier, we do plan on doing a noise ordinance update. This is going to come back to you in a more robust discussion in, in less than a year. So, we will, we will dive into this, trust me.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I, I feel like on, like, on approved grading permits from the city, just speaking on grading, like, it has your hours of operation on that permit, that, that's, does never, never says to 8:00 PM during the weekdays. So, is it like specific to the permit issued? Like, are the operating hours specific to the permit?
This is just, the, this is just acts deemed in violation of that chapter, so it's not, it's only this chapter in the development code, it may not be the same as what's in the grading ordinance. It could be a whole different discussion.
Okay.
It's only this section in the development code.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah. Pivoting back to the, the question on the appeal times, so it's currently, this is going to make everything 15 days, it says, within 15 days of the date of service of the notice. So, that's a notice of appeal, yeah, of the violation. So, everything goes back to that chapter 2.28, administrative appeals, that's currently in the code. And that's calendar days typically, it's not business days.
When is a noise ordinance discussion coming back up?
So, we're, next week, we are hoping to, that the council will approve the funding for the general plan cleanup, and the noise ordinance update is in that project, and we anticipate that it's coming back to you in about a year from now.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And Commissioner LaPaglia, your question about the specified hours, so when we process an application for a project, there are times where we ask for a noise analysis. The noise analysis looks at the construction phase and the operational phase. There can be times where we have a sensitive user next door to the site. Just for example, like a dozer might have to operate for 15 minutes to grade a pad, and if it's next to like a church, or a school, or elderly facility, we want to minimize those impacts. We might have to use sound walls, or limit the amount of time that they're spending in that area. So, sometimes, you will see more specific hours of operation, based upon what's surrounding the project site, if that would help. You also have different zoning. Sometimes, you have rural residential to the north, community commercial to the south, business park to the west. So, we do have to take into account those different noise volumes, because your land use can dictate how high or low that you can go with your impacts. So, we are very careful at conditioning projects for the certain hours of operation, if the noise analysis tells us to do so.
Right, yeah, I think, I think that's great, because, you know, it protects sensitive areas, like you said, so it's not, it's not just kind of like one size fits all, so.
Even not catcher habitat.
Not catcher habitat, all right. Okay. Well, back to their point, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think I'm fine with changing weekday to daily for now, and then it looks like it's going to come back anyway, so.
Agreed.
That's all for me.
Chris, calendar days, business days, what did?
It's, it should be, I believe it's calendar days, it's not, it's not specified in chapter 2.28, which is, but, it, we're, basically, all the appeals would go back to that chapter 2.28. And I, you know, we worked with the city attorney's office on, on consolidating that, and Paul, I believe that's correct, right, on the calendar, calendar days?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know what we're looking at.
Chapter 2.28, with the consolidation of the appeals.
Chris?
Yeah.
I would be shocked if days is not a defined term in the code. So, I bet if you look at the definition, it's going to tell you what days means, or holidays, as well.
It says, any notice of appeal to the city council must be filed within 15 days of the date of service of notice of the decision or action pursuant to section 1.2410 of the code, or within 15 days of decision or action of no notice of decision or action.
I figured it would be.
It's specifically defined, day means calendar day, throughout the code.
Is holiday defined?
There is a definition for holiday that includes the city identified holidays, plus any day from a mayoral proclamation.
Perfect, that answers that. Last one, the last couple slides, you mentioned about the different notifications, and, and wanted to kind of get our feedback of what we thought, and upside, downside of each, what, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, can I help a little bit with that discussion? So, yeah, because like Chris said, this is, on this one, this is kind of like a check-in back with the commission. So, four years ago, we had an administrative hearing process, the director at the time, working with staff, changed that, so that these became just director-level decisions. So, the question to the commission is, are any of these items that are, that we did that for, this is like a check-in, would you like to see those considered for potentially coming up, and being an actual conditional use permit that you would see? Are you concerned about them? Or are you comfortable with the way it is? And if you want, we can talk about, you know, which ones we've actually had applications on, because some of them, I, I don't think we've even had them in the four years, and then, some of them, we've, you know, we've done a few of them, right? So, that, that could be the discussion.
So, the question is, you as staff, is there anything that you would like to see different, you know, opposed to us? And then, we can go around and ask my colleagues if there's anything that, that they think that needs to be modified, or, or changed?
I, I mean, I guess, starting the discussion from, from city staff standpoint, I don't have any that I'm, that I can think of offhand, that would be ones that we would want to bring up. But these are the kind of things that, you know, eventually, if we have a project that gets appealed to, you might still see one of these, even with the current, you know, setup. We haven't had one. There are different types of alcohol permits, I would say this is just the minor conditional use permit one, there's also the AUP, which is different. So, but, I would say, just from staff standpoint, I don't really anticipate a need to change these, but we did want to check in with you to see if the commission had a, had a thoughts on it.
So, with that, I'd like to, back to my colleagues here, start with Mr. Fisher, is there anything that you?
I'm comfortable with the current way that it's being done.
Okay, Mr. LaPaglia?
Yeah, I have no, like, real further input on that, so I think it's fine.
Mr. Poychek?
My only question is, how often would this come up?
We, we actually, we, development plan permits, we have processed a couple of those under this process over the last few years. And then, some minor conditional use permits for alcoholic beverage sales, I believe, indoor commercial recreation, and those things.
Yeah, I think we did one indoor commercial recreation recently, and then, if, Chris, if you go down, we've done some vehicle sales.
Yeah.
As well. There, there is a, a use in the business park we did that was indoor vehicle only.
I think the wireless communication facilities, cell towers.
And then, we've had, we have a couple residential and wedding event facilities currently in process, but they have not completed their processing yet. And we have done a number of parcel maps as well.
So, it's more than once?
Yeah, this.
So, I definitely like it the way it is.
Yeah, do you want more work?
No, Commissioner, the metric was, we used to hold those administrative hearings in this room, it was just noticing, staff report, and almost 95% of the time, no one showed up. And if you're an applicant waiting for an approval, that's one more month. You know, you got to carry that cost on the property, you have to wait, and you can only imagine the types of customers we get, when you tell them, we'll take you in August, it's always too far away. But we looked carefully at, how often did we get people showing up, or wanting to ask questions? And I think since then, we've been very, very careful under the director's authority. We've brought certain things to you, if folks had concerns. You know, we're not quick to just make a decision, but I would say for those 95% of those consent items, I think that was a smart streamlining opportunity, and a cost-savings mechanism for those applicants, because, you know, for example, with, with changes in modernity, we're seeing a lot of people doing fitness training, and that would be a conditional use permit in the past. But today, with staff, as long as you have parking, and we know the hours, those are generally pretty smart processes, and wouldn't get a lot of flack from the public. But we try to gauge, you know, how much opposition would we think that those would generate, and how much time do we want to invest in the permit process? And I think that we've saved a lot of customers, a lot of time, since we've implemented this new condition. And staff have been very, very careful under SEQA, and planning and engineering, to understand that, you know, where we know that, that that's our responsibility right now. So, I think we've done a good job to manage those projects.
Yeah, and I would also add, we do, we, we do a lot of notices, you know, to the neighbors still. There's a two-step process, it's the initial notice of intent to either approve or deny, and then there's a second one, a notice of project approval or denial, and then the SEQA appeal. So, it's a two-step, you know, you know, review for everyone that's involved.
Yeah, I, I totally, I agree. I, I don't see any reason for changing anything, but I just wanted to bring that around, and see if anybody thought differently. So, all right, that should conclude any, anybody else have any, any other questions of staff? Okay. Next, we will move on to public testimony. The time is now 7:08 PM. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments, starting with proponents, opponents, then those neutral, in that order?
Seeing none.
Having none, we will close the public testimony and discuss the matter amongst the commissioners. Time is now, again, still 7:08 PM. Open it up.
First off, I'd like to thank staff, and I love the red line, it's saved a lot of reading. And I, I'd like to move forward, based on the changes we discussed this evening.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks for the presentation, Chris, and, you know, the clarification, and makes sure we're working through with, on some of the topics we had questions with. I think we feel comfortable, as far as the, the Saturday thing, and the, the fruit stands, and the parking, and all that. I think those are really the only two major concerns that we talked about, right? So.
Mr. Fisher, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, I don't have anything else to add as well, too, so, we do have, would someone like to make a motion? And then, which items are we going to strike numerically from, from that, and Carl?
Yeah, would you like me to read? Yeah, I can, would you like me to read the recommendation, and then we'll, we'll mention the items being struck, and then the additional language? So, staff recommends that we provide a recommendation to the city council, finding that the six code updates are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, in accordance with Class 32, Section Number 15061B3. And, if we go on to the second page here, we received your direction on the director's determinations, and we recommend to adopt a resolution to the planning commission of the city of Marietta, recommending the city council authorize the filing of the environmental determination, and approved development code amendment MCA 20230003, for the purpose of revising and updating chapters in, in the development code, chapters 16, 18, 22, 30, 34, 38, 42, 44, 52, 56, 60, 68, 70, 72, 73, 78, 90, and 110, the development code amendment, except, taking out, sorry, city attorney's letting me know.
Not, I, I was following along, but I was waiting to see which ones you were going to skip.
I didn't skip them. Taking out the slaughtering and rendering section, which is, I'd ask Chris to clarify which section that one is. In the sign update section in 1638, that we're still considering.
So, 1638 is off?
Correct.
And one other?
Chris is looking at the, I don't have it.
Sorry. Looking for my pages here.
Automobile signage?
We've got.
That one was 1638.
Yeah, we've got that one.
Okay.
I just need the slaughtering, rendering, rendering one here.
Looks like 1644, Mr. Vice Chairman.
1644.
Thank you. So 1638 and 1644 would be stricken from the items that?
Are recommended, correct. And then in 163130, DA, construction noise, the change, the word weekday to daily to match the rest of the section.
If anybody wants to make that motion, you can just move the recommended action.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table for, by Commissioner Wojciech, and a second by Commissioner LaPaglia. Madam Secretary, can you call for a roll call vote?
Vice Chair Boomen?
Aye.
Commissioner Wojciech?
Aye.
Commissioner LaPaglia?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher? Motion carries unanimously 4-0.
All right, that concludes that, that portion. Thank you, Chris, for the presentation, and the rest of staff, we really appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to present this.
Next, we're going to move on to a workshop on the Planning Commission Training Workshop for Commission Functions, the Public Process, Public Records Act Request, the Brown Act, and State Law. May we have a staff report, please?
All right. Just give staff a second to pull that up. So this is really, it's a follow-up, partly, I would say, at the request of various commissioners over the course of the past year, and wanting to talk about some of these issues, I think, in a public forum. And it helps, I think, to have all of you here. I mean, Commissioner Harland has, Chair Harland has an excused absence. We wish him well and his recovery. But we, you know, we want to have this discussion with all of you. It's easier to do, I think, in a way, when we have all of you in the room here together. We can have these discussions together. You can ask questions of the city attorney and staff as we work through things like this. So I'm going to kick it off somewhat basic, some of the things we've, you've probably heard before in commissioner trainings that you've gone to. I know that I've attended with you, so we're going to kind of get into that. And then we're going to get further into a little bit more about what the commissions does, and get into maybe some discussion on things that you've been concerned about. And if, if you recall, we met with the city council in October, we kind of talked about some of these issues. I just want to make sure we stay on the same page on these things, we have these discussions together and move forward. And so with that, I just have a presentation, I'd say, I'm happy if you want to cut me off and start having a discussion. I don't have to just keep blabbing. We're going to break it up. I kind of handle about the first third of it. Paul, the city attorney here, will, will handle sort of the middle part. And then at the end, the sort of final third of the presentation, there was a request by a couple commissioners to sort of talk about, well, what are all the new state housing laws that came into effect this year? None of you were able to attend the Planning Commissioners Academy this year, we did talk about that there. So I kind of brought some of that information to just share with you some of the things that we're dealing with this year, which I know you're all interested in. So I wanted to do that the last couple of months, I thought I'd throw that in with this. So with that, we'll kick it off. So I'm the city planner, Carl Steele. With me here tonight is city attorney Paul Early. Also have Jared Ramaya and Development Services Director David Chantranxu here as well, who can chime in if they like. So a little bit of an overview, we're just going to talk a bit about what the commission functions are, your purpose, your role, the role of staff as it relates to that, there's, you know, just to kind of clarify where, where those, those sort of roles are for us as well. What occurs during the public process, kind of gets into a bit of the discussion of the Brown Act and how public meetings are run in California, a little bit about public records. There's been some questions about that recently on some of our commission items. And then, like I said, we'll round out the new state laws. But definitely, cut me off, feel free to, to jump in and say, hey, let's talk about that a little bit more in depth, and I'm happy to have everybody else chime in as well. So your authority really is built into federal and state constitutions. Planning has a long history, so you have the authority to decide land use matters, and that's built into our, our state and federal constitutions. Your specific authority is in the Development Code, which we just spent a lot of time talking about. You're all obviously appointed by the city council, you represent the residents of the city. And then, as I've gotten to know each of you, you do each possess knowledge about the community organizations, and in fact, we have a former city employee as well on the commission, which I think is a benefit to the commission. So you do have special knowledge, that's good as commission, we want you to have that special knowledge. So your main task is really, and we've talked about this a lot recently, is being familiar with what's in the Development Code, what's in the general plan, and how that works. So your function, you guys know this, but some of this is partly for anybody who might be watching this, you hold public hearings, you, you consider items. Tonight, it was a code amendment, other nights, it might be a use permit or something. You advise the city council on things, you advise the city council on the general plan and programs. We've done a lot with that in the last few years, as you may recall. We did the housing element, we did the objective standards last year. A few years back, we did the general plan update, so there's a lot there. We do things with zoning districts and regulations, we did Development Code Amendment tonight. We do specific plans. You've been working on the triangle, you had the workshop last month, we'll be back with the triangle this next month, that's a specific plan that's in process. You do work on the CIP, Commissioner LaPaglia's favorite. So that's, these are all things that you advise the city council on, and these are all really important things that the city does. So that's, that's kind of your main function. You deal with both legislative matters and quasi-judicial reviews, and we'll talk about that. Legislative matters are kind of one basket, quasi-judicial reviews are kind of another. So your role is, you support the city council, and we talked about that a bit in October, I think, at the joint meeting. The council has goals, and we're trying to bring those to, through what we do with the commission as well. You do have a relationship with city staff, we work together on things. Ultimately, staff reports to the city manager, though. Staff does not report to the commission. So you can, you can dialogue with us, but I would say, just to be clear, we follow the direction of what the city manager tells us to do. That's, that's really where our, our rub is. You can disagree with us, and you have, and that's okay. That'll happen, and we can have a dialogue, and it's best to do it in a public forum like this, so we all understand where everybody's at. There's also a relationship with the public, and you need to have a community perspective when it comes to that. Being cognizant of public opinion, being respectful, you guys have done a good job of that. I think it's some tough hearings in the last couple of years, so that's just something that we have to do. You definitely need to balance interests. The commission shouldn't be political, and it shouldn't be purely technical. I've, I've worked in a few different jurisdictions, as I think everybody, all of our staff here have. There are sometimes commissioners that get overly technical, and then there are other commissioners who are looking to move up to city council and get overly political. You really need to find a balance there, to think about, how do I balance that and just be a commissioner? So sometimes it can be kind of tough, but we're here to help. Another thing that you can do as a commissioner, you can educate, and it's okay, even when you're on the dais and you're considering items, and if we have a bunch of people in the audience from the public, I think it's okay to pause and take a minute, and I think a few of you have done that in the last year. You can take a minute and look out at the, the public and explain to them, this is what we're considering, you know, and educate the public on things, both here at the hearing and when you're outside the hearing, because you're, you're commissioners, that's okay. That's something you can do, and as you learn things, you can, you can help educate better. Obviously, you have, you have a role to be ethical and fair, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. So you can have a big impact. I liked what was in the Institute of Local Government, which was one of the, the links I gave you in the brief, really brief staff report, but good planning can save money. The commission can do a lot for the city, and I, I believe in that for sure, working with you the last few years. We can do some good things to make sure the city is doing things right. You can also set expectations, especially with the general plan. The work we do on the general plan is, is decades out, and we're, we're setting the expectations for the community moving out, even after your time on the planning commission. It's important work, so take that to heart. You definitely support economic development, you heard a lot from Scott Agagini, you know, you were talking about the triangle last time, that's something that's important that the commission can do. You provide a forum for the community here, obviously, that's important. Then we talk about public health, safety, and welfare, that's a big thing that's built into planning, that's definitely something that commissions do, so you can have an impact there. You help us mitigate hazards, in a way, even talking tonight about the code amendments that we worked on, where we're worried about different types of hazards, we want to protect the public, that's something you can help us with. Whether you like it or not, there is a mission for us to increase equity and reduce barriers, especially related to housing. That's something that's, the state's doing, it's also something that's in our housing element, it's something we have to do. There are going to be more housing units built in the city, and we have to think about how do we be, how are we, you know, reducing barriers to getting housing built, and how do we promote equity for everybody to get housing? That's something we have to do. And then, looking at reducing environmental damage, conserving resources, I think most people like that, you know, as long as it doesn't impact their own personal land. But that's something, from a broader perspective with the commission, that's something that you want to be making an impact on as well. And when we do that with big projects, where we have to preserve land. So your conduct, what we want to see, obviously, we want to see commission prepare for meetings, so, you know, take the time to get ready, make sure you're up to speed on what's going on. We really want you to contact staff when you have important questions. And a few of you, I know, we've had recent discussions on some, some controversial items, that's good. It's okay to call, call staff and say, hey, I really want to talk about this, let's, let's, let's talk this through, and that's okay. That's part of the public process, so please take advantage of that. It's better to do that than, than, you know, to dig it up on the dais and not be sure, right? So I appreciate if you want to, if you want to call, you want to come in, you want to talk at the counter, we can do that. So you want to make sure you're performing hearings in a manner that's fair, courteous, responsive, and impartial. And you have to think about it in the way that it's not just, it's not just to each other, it's not just the public and staff. I also want to mention, like, with applicants, right? Sometimes we're going to get applicants we don't like, yeah, we still have to be courteous, fair, responsive to them, right? Even if they're proposing something we don't like. So think about that with, with what you're doing. You want to be sure the decisions are in the overall public good. And then, we talk about avoiding bias, conflicts of interest, we're going to, we're going to have a couple of slides on that, just to double-check, we go over on that. And then, obviously, it's important to let us know if you're unable to attend, we've had a couple snafus on that in the last couple of years, but let's try to make sure, just let me know, and you're not, you're not able to attend, let Tanya know as well. So legislative matters, so we'll talk about the two different kind of types of things that come to the commission, just to clarify. So legislative matters typically are things like what you saw tonight, right, a code amendment, right? So this is different from a specific project that, that is on a piece of land in the city, you're really just making a recommendation of the council. And so, do you, do you approve of that? Do you approve in a modified form, which is, I would say, what we did tonight, right? Or if you disapprove, you can disapprove, but you got to make findings in all these cases, right? In the case tonight, staff prepared you detailed findings, they're in the resolution, right? If you want to disapprove something, especially related to a legislative matter, we're going to need to work on those findings, right? So remember that. Findings are important. We could spend a whole nother training on findings, but we're not doing that tonight. And then you need a majority of vote on those legislative matters, so that's important. Typical examples would be something like the housing element, like we did before. So quasi-judicial matters, that's when you're, you're reviewing development plans, conditional use permits, and you're sort of putting on a different hat when you're doing those, right? You're basically interpreting the code and applying those laws. And then our city ordinance requires there, there be a hearing, you're going to take testimony, and you're really looking at applying standards to the, to the facts in front of you, right? You, you're basically acting like judges, and there's facts and evidence, and then you're going to listen to testimony, and then you move forward, right? So it's a different, it's really a different process. Sometimes it's hard to do both of those at the same meeting. You might see that we tend to bring new code amendments by themselves. I've, I've always appreciated that as a staff person as well. I want you guys to be sort of, sometimes it's easier just to keep that one hat on at that one meeting, but that's kind of how, how the quasi-judicial matters work. So typical ones would be development plans, conditional use permits, like our, you know, car wash type items that we did. So the role of staff, like what we expect of ourselves, you know, we're going to, before it comes to PC, we're going to do a professional analysis, we're going to give you our best recommendation. Oftentimes, as you guys know, these items have been in process maybe for years here, maybe for a long time, and so we'll do our best to bring it forward. Typically, with a legislative matter, you're going to have an analysis related to zoning and general plan conformance, and then a recommendation. The quasi-judicial matters tend to be more technical, right? So, and that's when we, we get into talking about traffic counts and noise numbers and things like that, how the project meets the code, what are the different SEQA impacts. Typically, you're not going to spend as much time discussing that stuff in the legislative matters, because it tends to be a higher level, and also, you're not the decider on the SEQA, you're, you're just making a recommendation to council. But on quasi-judicial matters, you probably are making a SEQA finding, so it's different there. And then, staff's always available for questions. Just wanted to kind of clarify, though, there's been a lot of discussion recently on some whys, where, and as staff, we want to answer, we want to help the commission, but sometimes, I think as commissioners, you should think, maybe I need to table this for the applicant, right? And, and then try to ask the applicant, because staff's not always going to know that stuff. We, we know the technical aspects of the project, but sometimes you need to pause and think, this is really more of a question for the applicant, and try to table those for when the applicant comes up. It's okay to ask the applicant questions, right? All right. So a little bit more on the public process. Also, in the same Institute for Local Government, sort of talking about the public process, there's a bit about these kind of expectations of the public, that there's going to be fair treatment, compassion, respect, responsibility, integrity, public trust, and vision. It kind of works into everything we do, and I just wanted to kind of walk through noticing, because that's something else that the commission's been asking about a lot lately. So we do try to do reasonable advanced notice, right, on projects. And we have process that's in, it's in our ordinances, it's in, it's in state law as well. And you have to think about it from, there's a few different aspects, right? An applicant submits a project, it might take a year to get through the process, and then it needs to go to a public hearing, right? So they have expectations when they submit the project, that things aren't going to change while they're processing their project. And even when they get to a hearing, that they're not going to hear, oh, there should have been more noticing done, or something like that. So I wanted to, I wanted to talk about that a little bit, that we have standard processes, we talked about this in October with the city council. I didn't hear a need to change our processes when it comes to noticing. So I just want to, just clarify that further, that, that there's an expectation, not only from, from the public, not only from us as staff or the commission, but also the applicants, that there's a standardized process, we follow that process. Currently, on a typical project, like a use permit, that's going to be a notice, a posting on the property, notice in the newspaper, whether or not people read the newspapers, that's still what's in state law. And, you know, the 300-foot mailing notice around people's properties, whether people get their mail or not, that's not up to us to decide. So we follow those, those processes. That is, that is following state law, and that's, that's the public trust, that's what the state has deemed the process. And that's our city process as well. We still provide people reasonable opportunity to be heard, we provide people the ability to come to the hearing. And then.
Carl, a question on that.
Sure.
Do we have to follow, like, what the state does, or can we have, can we go above and beyond that?
You can. You can go above and beyond what the state does. Some cities choose to do that.
Like post on their social media or, or something?
We don't have a standardized process on that.
We can't force them to speak on their social media, on their accounts, can't compel them.
I don't mean like speak, I just mean like post, like basically what is on, what is posted on the property, post like that, you know, letter or whatever.
Yeah, but you'd be compelling them to use their platform to say something specifically, we can't tell them what to say.
I meant like on the city's platform.
Right, right.
Yeah, like, you know, like Marietta PD posts like a bunch of, like, fun stuff, and I feel like they get their message out there about certain things.
I think, yeah, and some of the big, right, and some, Commissioner LaPaglia, some of the bigger things we do, we choose to advertise, like, for example, when did the objective standards last year, we advertised towards the end that, like, hey, our objective standards are coming to a hearing soon, please provide your input if you wanted to provide, provide input, right? I would say that's an above and beyond, but, and that's kind of like, I would even say that was something somewhat related to what, you know, getting feedback from the commission that was something somewhat related to what, you know, getting feedback from the commission at those workshops where you said, hey, can we try a little bit harder, right? And we did. But that wasn't, that's not built into code. That's more like, you know, some feedback from the commission. Staff stepped up a little bit more on that. And we can do that, but I would say there is a basic level that's different. That's one city project. But on a typical project, the applicants, you know, if we're talking about a private project, applicants expect certainty as well when they submit a project. And whether or not we choose to do a social media blast on an applicant's project also is not really something that's built into code. It's really, that's up to the city if they choose to do that, but that's not something that we have outlined.
What are your thoughts with that? Of course, we're going to have the biggest project come forward very shortly, which is the triangle, right? So would, in that example, would the city, or could the city, maybe should the city, put something out proactively on their social media account to basically advertise, you know, not only the planning commission hearing on that, we're already past the workshop, but then also maybe the council meeting as well too, to kind of get the word out a little bit more so?
I can convey that back through the city, but I would caution that we should be doing the standard process that we would typically do.
Oh, I'd say, like Commissioner Lapaglia said, going above and beyond. So do what we need to do, but then, hey, here's something, kind of a once in a lifetime type of a thing, and just noticing, hey, here's the meeting, this is what's going forward. I know Commissioner Harlan, I don't want to speak for him, but since he's not here, I'm going to, but he brings this up quite often.
He does, yeah.
As the ability to, hey, how many, you know, when did we send out notices? How far out, you know, what's our reach? How did we advertise this to where we got just a few or a lot of people here that night? And so it's just a matter for public input to be fair.
I think that's fair, and I think, I appreciate that. And I think, I think we did, well, now we're hearing that from you here in this workshop, and I think we did talk about it a little bit at the last workshop as well. So I think staff has heard that on that project specifically. But I would say, as a matter of practice, that's not something that we would typically do.
I'd say for, just me, I'd just maybe suggest, you know, for big ticket items and things, not maybe some of the run of the mill type of stuff like that, but maybe larger, you know, development.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we're definitely, we're definitely kind of like, you know, drawing some big attention for everyone to come here, but I guess that's the point of having a public hearing is for people to come. And you are right, because it's so often where like, you know, something gets approved and starts being built and the public's like, oh, I never saw that, I never saw the notice, or I never read the newspaper. You know, you can come over here and, you know, read the sign that the city has. I mean, it seems like, and I don't mean to make a big fuss about this, but the state standard seems like the bare minimum, posting in the newspaper, which we know hardly anyone reads, and it's going on the city website, right? Or in the field, you know, you post a sign on there. So if you don't drive by that in the two-week span that it's up, then you miss it. So I don't know, I think it's a point to be made that times have changed. We update all this other stuff and we haven't updated, you know, how we communicate with the public at all.
Maybe if you could also, maybe since we're on signage, maybe explain or share a little bit of logistics. I know there's been a few occasions where, you know, drive by and the sign's posted, you know, not really in the best location, you know, that I would think. Or maybe the sign got knocked down. What's the maintenance and the posting and how does that work? Do we have city employees do that or we contract that out or what?
We typically contract out the sign placement and they make a record of, they show when they place it there. But, right, we can't control the wind or, you know, vagrants.
Vandalism, yeah.
Yeah, vandalism, whatever. We can't control that. In the case of, I think, the Ivy House project, you know, we had active homeless on that site, you know, like, so the city can't be down there, standing there next to a sign, holding it up, you know? It's just the way it is.
No, but if someone said, hey, the sign got knocked down or vandalized or whatever, they make a call to city, then we make an effort to basically put it back up in place or fix whatever it is. So that way, there's noticing there, it doesn't sit there for a week or two.
Sure, when we know, and I know, I believe more than one commissioner has let us know before, like, hey, I drove by the property, the sign's down. That's helpful. It's good to let us know.
Okay. Well, you answered my question that, you know, we can do stuff on our own, we can go above and beyond if we choose to.
We can. I would also add, I would add, in that same vein, there is a code section that talks about when there's a large project that affects a larger area, the director has discretion to require more noticing, which we rarely invoke, but we can invoke. And for a big project, we can do that. And we've talked about it before on some of the bigger projects, a wider swath of noticing rather than just the 300 feet. We have that.
Would it be within the, you know, ability of the planning commissioners to like send an email to the director and say, hey, I think this deserves a larger outreach?
I think one of you could offer that on your own, but not collectively, I would say. But the director's within his rights to do what he wants to do as the director. He's not really taking direction from the commission, but the commission's opinions are helpful as well.
All noticing comes at some cost, whether it's noticing that we're requiring of the applicant to do, or noticing that the city is doing on its own initiative. So anything that we're asking to expend city resources to do that are above and beyond any written policy or code or requirements like that, would go up to the city manager or the city council to decide whether to expend those resources, whether at staff time or printing or whatever it might be.
What's our cost per Instagram post run right now?
Probably higher than you would imagine, considering that somebody has to generate the post to begin with, you know, the graphics, the, you know, it's probably deeper than you think. But the point is, who decides how to allocate those resources? To have the staff member say, okay, I want you to create and generate this image with these graphics and this information on it. Okay, you're going to get legal approval on this? What kind of notice is it? Okay, and then, you know, and then you could be looking at several hours of work. Now, that may seem trivial in the context of something like the triangle, but ultimately that's a decision that's kind of outside the scope of this room, right? That would be a policy decision that would be above any of us to decide. We can make that recommendation, certainly, that certain things should happen. And the commission can make those recommendations as well. But there's, I just want to make sure we understand there's a difference between what we impose on the developer to do and what we agree to do ourselves.
I would also offer, like you were mentioning, like, what if I call staff or what if I email you? That's fine, and we'll consider it. But I would say, if we don't, I wouldn't really bring that up if I were you.
Oh, no, of course not.
So that's something you can recommend, but, you know, we'll consider it. It's helpful.
I think just a low budget, you know, when you look at the fire department, police department, they do pretty well on their social media following and simple things, Instagram, you know, take a photo of this, post it, and they have quite a following because of that. I think maybe the suggestion might be as simple, I'll use the triangle as an example, a picture of the triangle or a picture of the sign that is out there posted on the city's, you know, social media, ask the other city departments to post it, hey, this is what's going on. It can be low budget, as simple, that doesn't have to be super elaborate or take staff a lot of time. I don't think we're looking for that. But it's a messaging and also, I think maybe, you know, from the economic development side of the house, that's a plus, that's a feather in their cap. Hey, look, we're finally moving this forward. It gains some synergy and puts a good name for the city.
I think you hit on it right there. I might be punting this to economic development.
Yeah.
But the answer is we could do that.
That's where I think that probably rah rah, you know, I think it would probably help send a message.
What I would add, I think economic development did do that with, you know, with the opening of the Hot Springs Resort this year, you know, so, right, which is, that's sort of a whole different, sorry, a whole different sort of group at the city doing that kind of stuff.
Right.
Yep. So, sorry, I see Joe wants.
Quick question. One of your slides triggered a question with me. You know, I think without exception, every meeting we've had, every project that's come before us, it's always come with a stack, staff recommendation for approval.
Typically, yes.
In your careers, have you seen a situation where staff doesn't approve it, but yet the applicant still wants to come before the commission? Because I haven't seen it yet, so I wasn't sure if that's.
Yes.
Okay.
I feel like we had one of those in the last two years.
We had one about a year or so ago here.
Yeah.
We, I can tell you, Jared and I hearken back to this, sometimes in the early 2000s, we were processing so many cell sites, it was unbelievable, you just wouldn't imagine. And we both worked at the same county. And there was a time when there was a direction from higher up at the county that said, get these out of here. And we took literally like dozens of cell sites to hearings, and some of them we took with recommendations of denial. There were just so many in process, and the ones that weren't working well, we just said, get these out of here. It was just a different era. There were so many being worked on at the time. And then since then, of course, state and federal law, they've made them much easier to permit on purpose so that we can all have our cell phones, right? But it was a different era back then.
Commissioner, one thing I remind myself is that I am not always the decision maker. If something is under my purview, that's fine. But if something is under the attention of the planning commissioner or city council, I'll work as hard as I can with the applicant to find common ground and resolve it. But there's a point where we have to present that project to the decision maker. We as staff can't hold them back. We have permit streamlining and other requirements under state law, like Housing Accountability Act. But you have to be really careful at the staff level. If we were to just hold back an applicant from the decision maker, I think we're failing in the overall process. But we do the best we can to bring to you a consistent project that is for you to approve, but there are times where we will present to you an issue or concern where we don't have full consensus. I think we had that with an auto use a couple of years ago where we could, there was four outstanding items that the applicant would not agree to, and we felt like we were going back and forth for months. And we made a decision point, let's bring it to the planning commission. And rightfully so, that evening, you went through those four key issues, like when was the six-foot wall versus an eight-foot wall? I remember Commissioner Fisher said, I drove around town, we've done this before. Why can't we go with the eight foot? So staff was overruled by you, but you were the deciding factor on that conditional use permit. So I just offer you that staff have to make a careful decision to bring it to the decision maker. And sometimes you don't just have agreements with the applicant at that point.
Frankly, most applicants who want city, want staff recommendations, so they'll spend a lot of time working it out before we get here. So it's only in those rare instances where there's just a.
We have had situations where the staff and the applicant have not agreed. And so that presents a different issue too, is when it comes to the planning commission, and we know the staff doesn't agree with it, and this is still outstanding, and the developer is looking great at it, it's a difficult decision to make.
Yeah, we try, I think as we were just talking about, yeah, we try to bring them to you, ready to go. But yeah, occasionally, they, we don't all align and sometimes they will, we'll bring them forward. But typically, staff doesn't want to do that either because we, you know, we want to, if it's a good project for the city, we also want to try to make it comply and bring it forward the right way.
And this goes to the earlier comment about findings that were made. So the staff recommendation's coming with certain findings and certain, and acknowledgements of certain facts and conditions of the project. If that, if the decision of the commission is to go in a different direction, the commission needs to then provide staff with the reason, the why, right? So they can come back with whatever it is the commission's findings are. And those findings may be affirmative, we find this, that and the other, or they could be sometimes couching the negative, we're unable to make certain findings that are required by the code. But we need to detail what those are so that when we're, when the commission is disagreeing with staff, to articulate that so that they can bring you back the resolution that matches the commission's desire.
And then the other situation is when we approve something, but then the city council decides that it's not right. And so that they appeal it, which has happened just recently.
Yeah, and I would.
Happened twice recently. Yeah, and I would say, and most of those, you know, staff and commission were aligned with the decision that you made on the night that you made your decision. So that's the best we can do, right?
We're not the decision makers.
All right, should I keep plugging along?
You're not the final decision maker, right? But neither is the council unless, if you think of it in terms of the court, also, they can be appealed, their decision can be appealed as well.
I'd be curious in some of the staff reports if, when you come with a recommendation, but there were things that you were asking for that maybe you make concessions on, if we knew what those concessions were and what the reasoning behind them.
I mean, we'll tell you, Commissioner Wojcik, I mean, we'll tell you if things don't meet the code. I mean, that's typically like, we'll say in there, and I think that that happened in the case that Jared was talking about, where we said, hey, well, okay, the applicant wants to be here, these four things, or some of these things don't meet the code and here's why.
And I don't think it's happened since you've been on the dais, but we have had that happen where the commission was trying to accommodate an applicant once, and I've actually had to step in and say, we don't, this body doesn't have the authority to rewrite this section of the code. Unfortunately, this is something we're stuck with. That had happened on one or two instances a year or so ago where, and if we're aware of that, we'll call your attention to that, that this is, this one, this particular item that you're asking about, we just don't have any, this isn't discretionary.
Appreciate it. This is good discussion. I like it. All right, so I'll keep rolling on, but just want to clarify, so with the public process, we do typically keep time limits on people's being able to speak. I think a key thing that, for commissioners, and we've got new commissioners here, with testimony, with the public, is giving people the opportunity to raise all the issues. And if people repeat issues that have already been brought up from other speakers, that's one thing, right? But typically, it's a good idea when a speaker comes up, and especially if they get close to the end of the timeframe, it's ask them, did you raise all the issues you wanted to raise? And if not, you know, that's up to your discretion if you want to give them additional time to make their final points. So just to be helpful there. Because it is, you know, when we're at a hearing here, some of these people, as you know, you know, the project maybe has been going on for a year or two, and they've just got their three minutes, and they just want one more minute to make that additional, you know, point. And let them get all the issues raised, as I would say is my advice, if you can. And try to be impartial, pay attention to what they say. So we're going to talk a little bit about bias and conflicts. So obviously, you want to avoid bias. It's distinguished as different from a conflict of interest. So you want to be impartial, you want to be unaffected by personal embroilment. Essentially, what that means is your own stake, right? So don't think about your own stake in things. We want to have fair hearings. And then I did, I want to take a little time to talk about ex parte communications because this is, I know something, it occurs, and I'll use an example from a different jurisdiction, so, because it's really common. So I did work in a coastal city. It's really common when you go to the coastal commission that they disclose what are called ex parte communications, because as you can imagine, coastal projects can be multi tens of millions of dollar projects on the coast. So property owners, applicants, consultants will all reach out and want to meet with each of the coastal commissioners, there's 12 of them. And you can imagine, there's all kinds of meetings that happen on big projects, like when, for example, there was a dieselization plant in a city I worked in, and there's a theme park in that city as well that's in the coastal zone. And there were lots of meetings with coastal commissioners leading up to those things. And just as a commissioner, and for yourselves, you can have those communications, right? One-on-one. Consultants can reach out to you, property owners can reach out to you, say, I want to meet with you. I want to meet with you out on the property. That's fine. You can have those, but you need to avoid making any commitments in those meetings. You can just hear them out. You can walk around their property with them, whatever it is. And then here at the hearing on that item, you need to disclose that ex parte communication. We need that. It's really important. It's not only important for you sort of to provide yourself color, it's also important for the commission as a whole to know, okay, you know, he reached out to you and you, or all of you, right?[1708.03] And walked, you each walked around maybe on the property with this, you know, the person. So it's important to do that.
So I've been, I think this is my fifth year doing this, maybe sixth. That has happened a few times in the past, but we've never, we've never been asked to disclose that. And so you're asked, you're telling us now that we need to start disclosing that?
You do need to do that.
Okay.
Specific date and time, say, hey, on this date and time, I, I met or I spoke with this person.
Yes.
Just to make it clear, or?
Yeah, Vice Chair Bruman, that, that would be the best. It'd be best to say, right, I, you know, when the item first comes up, before the public president, before the staff makes the presentation, just say, you know, you can interrupt the chair and, and say, you know, for everyone's benefit, I just want to disclose, I had ex parte communication on this item, and then go through that, right? I met with, you know, whoever it is, Joe Blow, on, you know, January 1st, at, you know, 5 o'clock, on the property that's in discussion, and we, I had a tour of the property, we talked about the project, something like that.
Would it be possible then, in the script that the chair reads, you know, where you, you know?
We can add that in.
Anybody needs to, you know, recuse themselves, maybe to have a line in there saying, hey, does anybody need, at the appropriate location in the, in the script, would anyone like to disclose any type of ex parte communications?
That's a good recommendation, Vice Chair. Yeah, we can, we can add that into the script. That's a good idea. Yeah.
I found, in the times that I've been on the planning commission, I avoid them. I will not meet with anybody.
So that is, so it's interesting, you can bring that up, but that is, that is something you can choose to do. And in the context of my example, there are coastal commissioners who will announce that. They will say, I will not meet with anyone. I just show up at the hearing, and I am a commissioner, right? And there were some, there were some coastal commissioners that did that in my time, where I dealt with them. So that's a choice you can make on your own, or you can choose to do it if you like.
And I don't want to get too specific, I mean, I don't mean to get too specific, but like, if you, if you run into people like, you know, that are part of a development out in public, like out at a restaurant or something, and, you know, there's an exchange of, you know, I don't know, something minor, like, I can't, can't think of an example. I know we've got, you know, we've got a project coming to the commission, you know, next week, I'll see you next week kind of thing. Like, does that need to be disclosed, or is only like, if you go tour the property and like, you have like a full-on like discussion about the project?
Or a phone call, or a meeting, but if it's substantive, that's where we, that's where we would suggest you disclose it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And to round this out.
Not ceremonial, or, or social, or?
Right, like, you run into them at the movie theater.
Sure.
Like, hey, that was a great movie, by the way, I'll see you next week. That's, that's fine. We understand that. I would round this out, though. It's important to note, you reach your conclusion on that project, and you make finding based on the evidence and the record. So not on your, your going out and walking around on the property. So you have to be really careful with that.
Unless you describe that on the record.
Right.
I walked the property, I observed this, and, and now that becomes part of the record.
Yeah, please be careful with that. People have gotten into trouble over the years with that kind of a thing. Because if you want it to be in the record, you have to describe it and put it in the record, as the city attorney mentioned. So wanted to hit on that. Did want to talk a little bit about recusal, and then we're almost to Paul's show here. So when there are conflicts of interest, that's when it's reasonably foreseeable, the decision have a material financial effect on your economic interest, that's when you want to think about recusals. So it could be material if it involves the official's property in the decision. It could be if it's within 500 feet of your properties. We know where your properties are, and we have those in our GIS system, so you can always check in with staff, we can always let you know if you're not sure. It could also still affect you if, say, your property value were maybe going to go up, even if you were more than 500 feet away. This is all kind of built into some of the, the state law on this. So when you're not sure, check with us. Check with city attorney, check with city planner, we can talk about it. Happy to talk about it in advance. There could be some other financial effect as well, if you're not sure, you know, let us know. So with that, I will let Paul handle the next part.
All right, I'll take the next hour for, I'm kidding.
No.
No, I could easily do two hours on this, and I frequently do, but most of you, hopefully all of you have taken your ethics training that you're required to do within six months of taking office and every two years. So this is the component of that. If you haven't done that ethics training, just reach out to me, I'll send you a link so you can be up to speed and, and compliant with the law. But just so you have the opportunity to ask questions, we're going to go briefly over the Brown Act here, which basically requires that all meetings of the commission must be done in the open, in a public forum, and pursuant to certain rules, agendizing notice, that kind of thing. So the key question here that, that we usually discuss is what constitutes a meeting? What does meeting mean? And so there's your definition right there. It's when any, because you're a five-member body, whenever three or more of you are in the same place at the same time, to discuss, deliberate, take action, hear, anything within your, your jurisdiction. So let's describe what's not a meeting. Any two of you talking about anything you want, including matters under the, your jurisdiction, is not a meeting. Ceremonial functions are not meetings. Conferences are not meetings. Parties and retirement parties and things like that, all five of you can be at things of that nature. However, in any of those examples, other than the two-person example, you still need to be cautious about what you're talking about. So if you can't go to a conference and discuss items specific to your jurisdiction. This is, there's a recent attorney general opinion from a couple of months ago regarding state of the city addresses, where a mayor was giving a state of the city street, and the attorney general opinion said, this constitutes a meeting, it needs to be noticed, it needs to be brown acted, it needs to be open to the public. So a chamber of commerce holding a state of the city event that is closed and invitation only or ticketed, and not broadcast to the, and open to the public, was a violation of the Brown Act. So it's, it's important to be conscious of what constitutes a meeting. So outside of the scope of getting together in person, you've also got what we'll call virtual meetings or other, other means of contact, telephone calls, Teams meetings, texting, any of that kind of behavior also can, can create a meeting when it involves more than two of you. So we typically deal with this in the, whenever there's a telephone call from Commissioner A to Commissioner B, we're fine. But if Commissioner B then goes on to have a telephone call with Commissioner C about the same topic, now we're in risk of having what's known as a serial meeting. That could also be Commissioner A to Commissioner B, and then Commissioner A again to Commissioner C. That's the hub-and-spoke model. That can involve somebody who's not a commissioner. Resident contacts Commissioner Fisher to discuss a project, perfectly fine. Same resident, then commission, contacts Commissioner Wojcik to discuss the project. Again, totally fine. The second that resident contacts a third commissioner, we're at risk of a hub-and-spoke, especially if that resident is communicating information that they got from any of the other two. So we want to be very, very careful and be aware of that. If you're talking to somebody, hey, have you talked to any other commissioners about this? We probably shouldn't talk about this, if it's more than one. The, the single easiest advice to follow with respect to emails is to avoid the reply all button at all costs, because it's a very, very easy way to fall into this trap and unknowingly cause a violation by hitting reply all when other commissioners may be on that thread. I usually recommend to staff, we do this with the council, whenever we're reaching out to the body as a whole, we BCC them whenever possible, so that even if you do reply all, it doesn't go to the other commissioners. So if you ever get things and you notice that you may be in a BCC, that's why. We're trying to avoid that, that implication. One-on-one individual briefings are allowed, and that can happen with all five of you, but it's important that the staff member can, doing those meetings, is aware of the rules, so that they're not cross-sharing information, right? They're just, it's a one-way street. I'm giving you information about this project, I'm giving you information about, I'm giving you the same information one at a time, that's allowable, we're not creating a meeting there. But it, it's, it's a cautionary tale, and it's one that we, that the staff member involved needs to be aware of what their limitations are to not get into that problem. Then the other type of meeting that's a construct of the last 10, 15 years is the social media meeting. Because every time you hit a button that says like, or thumbs up, or sad face, or angry to anybody's comment, not just each other's, but just a citizen's, whenever you're doing that, you are conveying an opinion. You are speaking about the subject matter of that post. And when you're doing that in a place where other commissioners can also see comment like, you're, you've created a meeting. So this was, there's recent legislation about this from a couple of years ago that specifically addresses this. I can give you more detail, I'm not going to do it today, because it is a little convoluted and complex. You should have gotten it in that other training, but I'm happy to reach out if you have any questions, and give you more comprehensive on the limitations of commenting and liking. Generally, I would just say, don't do it. But if you want to be able to do so and have questions, please let me know. Contact with, with residents is, is perfectly acceptable, that includes applicants. We touched on, you know, if you're meeting with an applicant, that you probably want to disclose that, but there's no prohibitions against doing that, again, as long as you're not creating a serial meeting in the process, which is the third bullet point there. Then to go one step further here on open and public discourse, this includes documents as well. All items that are presented in a public hearing or in an agenda are released to the public in advance. It does happen in occasion that things come in last minute, either right before the meeting or even during the meeting. So those documents will become, be made available to the public. Anything you've seen that is being considered by the board needs to be made available to the public as well. This also includes any communications you're having with the applicant, or citizens, or each other, or council members, or staff via text message or email. If you are discussing anything of city business, even if it's on your personal phone that has nothing to do with the city, it is disclosable. And if you don't do it voluntarily, it'll happen by court order, but it, it can, anything you're speaking on there becomes a public record. So be cautious, be, be aware that those messages that are not personal in nature are open to the public. So typical public records in, in this context are going to include the staff reports, the plans, the studies, all the resolutions and agreements, letters, any communication between staff. Not everything is, is here in, in the meeting, there's a lot that goes on with staff. Obviously, we've talked about that before it comes to the meeting. All of those are public records as well. Question is just going to become whether or not any one of them falls into an exception to the act. And there are exceptions, things like drafts are not, so an applicant may submit several drafts of something before it becomes final. Those drafts are not public records. Security plans, things like that, that, that could be considered by staff, and, you know, where the cameras are, where the, the emergency lockdowns are, things of that nature, are all exempt as well. But the general rule is they are all public records to begin with, unless we can plug them into an exception, which there are very few of. So that's all I had to go over with you briefly. This is just an opportunity, if you had specific questions or concerns about the open meeting or public records rules.
Otherwise, I can move on to.
Otherwise, we'll move right on to the House of Lords.
If you guys don't want to talk about that.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. That was, that was good.
Okay. All right. So this is just following up from, a few commissioners had asked, hey, you know, you've been talking a lot about these new state laws that went into effect, what, what went into effect in January, I think a few of us had talked about that. So these are kind of the, some of the big-ticket items I wanted to cover, and feel free to jump in if you have questions. So the first one, these are, I have them broken up into just a few slides, just by category. The streamlining ones typically deal with housing streamlining and like affordable housing streamlining. So the first one's a Scott Wiener special, Senator Wiener, SB 423. It's basically an extension of SB 35. And if you recall, SB 35 is the one that has a ministerial approval process for certain affordable projects. We have not had an SB 35 project in Murrieta, but there was one in Temecula that kind of went a little sideways when they found some cultural items on the site, which kind of threw the whole thing into jeopardy. But this basically is an extension of SB 35 is, is what was passed last year, so that's going to be around for a bit longer. SB 4 is another Scott Wiener bill, of course. This one, really to, to say it in layman's terms, it's essentially created a buy right approval for affordable housing on religious organizations' properties and higher education institutions, so universities, colleges, they can just build affordable housing essentially by right now with this, with this bill. We have not seen one of these projects yet in the city, and I don't know if there's even been one nearby. I have heard about universities down in San Diego, since I live in San Diego County. I heard that there are a couple of universities looking into this down there, but I have not heard if anybody's done one of these yet. 684 is just a one about, it's a real specific one about infill sites on small sites, doing smaller housing projects that are obviously, just the 10 units is a pretty small project. We have not even had anybody ask about that one recently. AB 490 is an interesting one. This, this came out of the discussions that the state was having about adaptive reuse. So what that is, is looking at commercial, industrial, office buildings, things like that, and converting them into housing. And this one passed last year, it's in effect. It's, has to be 100% affordable projects, and it can be commercial sites. So it can, this could happen in our city, someone could get ahold of like an office building and, and utilize this law. We haven't seen it happen yet, no one's proposed it, but it is on the books now, so it is possible for somebody to, to utilize it. There's very specific criteria. Most of these housing laws related to streamlining do have the provisions that it has to be prevailing wage as well, which I've dealt with a lot of the affordable developers even recently. A lot of them don't do that, the prevailing wage, and a lot of the, the market rate developers don't either. So it can be really difficult to make these projects work, but it's still there. And sorry, city attorney.
Yeah, sometimes it's skilled and trained workforce requirements, and union requirements, not just prevailing wages.
Yep. And then the last couple bills in the streamlining, essentially, if you think about, we've talked to the commission about SB 330 before, and we've talked to the commission about Housing Accountability Act, and, and all these shot clocks that we have now, that the states put into effect on the discretionary side. Now, on the post-entitlement side, which is after you get through a project and it's at the building counter, there's now a bunch of shot clocks that the states put in now, that plan checks have to go a certain speed and so on. And that's, that's what these, these bills are related to. So with that, move on to the SEQUA stuff, which is always really interesting. So there was, there was some reform for infill housing, that's the first one. Some discussion on residential noise impacts was in 1307. That one, the 1307 one is quite funny, if you, if you're interested. It relates to the UC Berkeley case, where there was this whole debate about whether or not students at campus were making noise, and whether or not that was a noise source, people, kids just partying as a noise source. That's what came out of that. So they did put that in state law, it's an interesting case. 1449 was affordable housing exemption from David Alvarez down in San Diego, that's on a specific type of project, and it'd be a project related to AB 2011. They put in a financial assistance exemption on certain projects. SP 91 was an interesting one. That relates to the motel conversions that were happening with the homeless housing. There were people trying to go after those projects from a SEQUA standpoint and to sort of strike them down, so the state just put a SEQUA exemption in for those. So that, that went into effect in January. And then, let's see, yeah, that's the state in its infinite wisdom using SEQUA to just make their stuff go through. And then, let's see, AB 356 was the Delipided Housing Refurbishment Act, that's an extension of an act that had already been passed. And then there was some administrative record reform as well. And then I just got a couple more slides here. So on land use and planning, which I know is stuff that, that we're definitely really interested in here, they did monkey around with the density bonus law, we think they're going to keep doing that, it seems like every year. So they did bump up the density bonuses for the two categories that are really hard for people to hit. And I think we talked about this when we talked about the, the housing element. We are likely going to meet our low-income target here in Murrieta with all the projects we've been doing probably this year. We've already met our market rate target, but it is really difficult to get that very low category, and the moderate category is also really difficult. The state knows this, so they, they've vamped up the density bonus law to get more of those units statewide. So there's changes there. They did some amendments to the Surplus Land Act, that's just them kind of looking at, and Jared had some experience with this recently, the state's trying to see if more of those surplus lands out there can be acquired for more housing. That's kind of what that relates to. AB 821 is an interesting one, which has really put, I'd say, cities that I know with not a lot of staff on notice. So for this, the way this works, essentially, there are places out there in the state, probably many jurisdictions, where the general plan might say one thing, and zoning might say another. So for example, related to housing, general plan. So for example, related to housing, general plan might say you can build 20 units per acre, but the zone that's on there maybe only says you can do 10. Or the zoning regulations say you can only get about 10. So this new law essentially says if someone drops an application on your counter and they want to build the 20 units per acre that the general plan allows, you have to rezone the zoning within 180 days. Otherwise, the project goes through. That's essentially what it says. So we're in good shape here. I don't want any alarm bells to go off. We looked at it when this came out, but that's essentially what the state's doing. They've put a lot, there are a lot of cities out there that really hadn't holistically looked at their general plan and zoning together in a long time. And those people really need to look at that. Otherwise, they'll be in a world of hurt when some of these projects come in. And then there were some building code updates for adaptive reuse projects, right? Related to the previous bill we talked about, about adaptive reuse. As you all know, they keep doing things to the ADUs. So there was a bill about allowing ADUs to be sold separately as condos. That did pass. That's in effect. We have not had one yet in the city that I know of, but that can happen now. People can condoize an ADU.
Wait, can we talk about that? You go ahead.
Sure, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, so does that mean, I'm a resident here, I'm going to throw in a couple ADUs in my backyard. Then will I go through the process of getting a new APN for those specific units?
I think it's just a, yeah, it's a condo map, so it's not really a, you might get an APN that has like a letter on it.
But if I'm selling those specific units, I have to segregate it for my home?
Yeah, there's a way to do that and still have it on the same parcel.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Just with the condo map, yep. But yeah, theoretically, according to state law, you can do, you can, currently, the way it works, you can build a house, you can have an attached ADU in your garage, you can have the attached junior ADU on the side of your house, and you can have a detached ADU in the backyard. HCD recently clarified that last year. There were a lot of jurisdictions questioning that. And that is what the state has said, is essentially four units on every single family lot in the state. That's what they've said.
Does my home then become part of the condo map? Or is that still separate from the--
That's up to you.
If I took my garage--
Yeah.
--and converted that to an ADU?
You could, so Commissioner Wojcik, it would depend on how you prepared the condo map. You could just prepare the condo map and it's just the airspace of the ADU? Or you could make your house a condo and then have common space? Yeah, it's wild.
All right.
It's, you can imagine, like, I think a few of us thought we were in a different universe last year when that bill came out. We were like, what are they talking about? So, yeah, big changes there. Relatedly, with ADUs, owner occupancy requirements are going to be removed by next year. So essentially what that means, there's always been this requirement in every jurisdiction I ever worked in, where the owner had to live in either the house or the ADU. So let's go back to the days when it was just one house and one ADU. That was always the requirement. State's doing away with that. So now you could live in Arizona and have a property with a house and an ADU. And as of 2025, you will not have to live in either.
Your single family home can become a fourplex rental.
Do you know why they delayed that to '25?
Probably because a lot of people were upset, but they still want to do it. I don't know. I don't know the, but yeah, so it's more local control being clawed away. So, and then they did pass a bill about streamline 30-day approval for pre-approved plans. The state's pushing this pre-approved ADU thing. We do not have those yet here at the city. It's something we're considering coming up with at some point, but we don't have them yet. Some cities moved really quickly and have pre-approved ADU plans, like City of LA has them, some other cities have them, San Diego. And so with this bill, it's almost, it's kind of unfortunate in a way, at some of those cities, I don't think they knew they were going to do this bill. But this bill now says if you have those, you got to approve those in 30 days. When people come in, drop those on your counter, they got to go through in 30 days. So it's really quick.
For an ADU?
Yep.
For a pre-approved design?
The pre-approved plans.
Like, we'll have like carport designs that are already approved by the city. Sometimes you go in and you walk in and you go, I just going to build that. And it doesn't have to go through a whole plan check process. So if we have, if we have one of those for ADU--
And it still has to meet our code for offsets and our building and--
Yes, yes. All our objective standards correct. We do not have pre-approved ADU plans yet, though. So this does not apply to us yet. But you can imagine, you know, the way the state's working on this stuff, there will probably be a bill at some point that says we have to have pre-approved ADU plans.
That's going to be a question.
We don't have them yet, so. So more to come, I'm sure. On enforcement, there's some interesting ones. Essentially with the bill, the first one did, they've expanded HCD's authority. We can tell you, and I think some of you, we've talked to you about this, we've noticed a definite shift at HCD. HCD is hiring staff who used to be planners at cities and counties. And when a project maybe isn't going great, an applicant will reach out to HCD and then we will get a call or an email from HCD. And oh, one of them last year was kind of funny. It was a staff person I worked with before and she works at HCD now. And she's their enforcement arm. So they're hiring planners and they're monitoring projects. And I've never seen this before. This is, this is brand new territory. We've never had staff at HCD that actually knew what they were doing, to be honest, not to throw them under the bus, but we really never did. And now you've got staff there that are like, hey, we heard about this project. What's going on with this project? And then they're reaching out and then, you know, they reach out and we have to bring the city attorney in sometimes to talk about, well, what are we talking about here? So it's interesting.
Is there ever going to get a time when the housing is going to be just no more? I mean, the biggest problem that we have up here is the residents' concern about the overbuilding of all of these housing projects. And why can't the planning commission, you know, disapprove it, so to speak? How are we educating residents and how are we educating the public?
I do my best. I would, Commissioner Fisher, there's, I talk to people almost every day where people call and ask about different aspects of our housing, because that's really all a lot of our projects are, that people see. And I do my best to explain to people, a lot of it's outside our control now. It's, the state has taken the city's local control when it comes to these projects. You know, as you know, as our commission, you know, the properties that are zoned and designated for housing, there's really not a lot we can do now to stop that housing from getting built, other than we need to make sure it meets our objective standards, it needs to meet our code. But there's really not a way to say, no, we don't want that now. It's too late. Unfortunately, that's what the state's done with their, with all the bills they've done.
Can I ask a technical question?
Sure.
We approved a project just recently and the city, a member of the city council appealed it. Could we have made that appeal or could we have made that rejection here at the planning commission?
I'm going to let the city attorney, because he looks like he wants to jump in.
I'm just, that really has floored me a little bit. Assuming you could make the appropriate findings, but then it would, that would, you would still likely end up in the appeal situation. It would just be the developer, the applicant would have appealed.
Well, but the city council person appealed it based upon safety.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into what's happening in a pending appeal and specifics on that. You know, we will have to see how that plays out. But could the planning commission also reject a, on a public safety basis? Yes, if you can make the findings for that public safety exception. Very difficult threshold to reach. Is it possible? Certainly. But yes, that's certainly something that you would see. If you saw something that created a public safety hazard and you could articulate it and you wanted to decline based on that, on it, you would, going back to our earlier discussion, you would make the findings or fail to make the findings that are required based on the articulated public safety reasons. And it would go back to staff then to rewrite that resolution with that determination, come back to you to adopt that new resolution, which would then be subject to appeal by the applicant at that point.
But safety alone is not a reason for a rejection? You have to have a finding behind that safety?
Correct. You can't just say, I think there's a public safety issue here.
Right.
You need to articulate the specific, because it's going to relate to some specific issue. I don't like the design of this roadway because of this sightline issue is created that creates this driveway approach. I don't know what it could be.
Okay.
But it would be very, you would have to articulate it with very specific facts.
You have to articulate a finding with your rejection.
Right. And it would be a rejection of that particular issue, not the project in its entirety. It could--
Yeah, that's a good point.
Could have a domino effect.
City attorney makes, it would have to really be on that item, though, right? Not the project as a whole, on just that part of it.
Well, but if I reject that, if I'm concerned about that project--
Right.
--and I'm voting, I may not vote in favor of the project because of that issue.
Because of that issue.
But you would identify that issue and the applicant could correct that issue or fight you on whether or not, an appeal, on whether or not that is a legitimate public safety exception.
Or getting back to, I would say, as staff, we don't always want you to continue things, but I would say, getting back to a bit of what we talked about earlier in the workshop, there is always the option that you say, hey, there's not enough here for me to make this decision tonight. And I want, I want this and I want this. Make a list of what it is you want. Staff, we need more information on this. Applicant, we need more information on this. These are the things I need to make my decision. That's an option as well. I would say typically, we don't want you to continue things and you should consult with us if you're thinking about going that way. But that is also an option on the table. You can continue things and ask for more information. I would caution, especially on housing projects, we only have five hearings now under state law. So, and that includes the city council.
And all appeals.
Yeah. So, so we're typically game planning, to be honest with you guys, with the commission, we're game planning a couple hearings at most, because if something ends up at the city council, we want to give them the flexibility to have a few hearings as well.
So back to what you were, what these last couple of slides on the new state laws, and this is a great, I think, maybe expanding these and maybe including those slides on, say, the planning website would help, would help get the message out. You know, I'll take one, AB 1033, ADU is sold on separately as condos. The state is now requiring, you know, and put it to the state. The state is now saying that they, effective the state, they could be sold separately as condos. And then put everything, the state is basically taking control and decision-making out of local control. So when items come before the planning commission, the public goes to the planning website and they, they're looking for that ticket item that is really kind of their own personal hot button issue. But having something like this on here saying effective on this date, you know, just a couple little bullet items like you've done here with maybe some expansion, just as a suggestion--
Yeah.
--might help get that message out where you say, hey, we're telling people this, but actually visually having it there would be really helpful. And just keeping it updated on a new nonsense legislation that you say Mr. Wiener keeps putting forward. By the way, I think--
That's the heading that's been requested right there.
Nonsense, nonsense regulations.
Yeah, nonsense regulations that it's just, it's causing more of a burden and it helps get that information. Hey, it's not, it's not you, it's not us, it's not council, it's back to the state.
I appreciate that, Vice Chair. I do, I have that up there. I do, I just didn't update it this year. I have it up to date as of last year, so it's a good suggestion and a good reminder for me. I need to just go update that document. There is a link on there that says new, or it says housing laws or something like that. I have it on our webpage and I have referred a number of residents to it. It was also requested by council members in discussions with them, so I have that on the city webpage, but it's a good suggestion. I need to update it with these ones specifically.
So if I have an ADU on my property, it has to be sold as a condo?
No, it--
It can be.
It can be.
There's a process and there's restrictions and maximums--
You don't have to, Commissioner Fisher.
Utility issues, but--
It's just an option now, but it is alarming that it's something the state decided to do.
Yeah, because the way I read that, I don't see an option.
Oh, you, you don't have to.
Well, he took the whole bill and boiled it down into a sentence.
Yeah.
So it is more complicated than that, but the point is that there is now the availability to go through a process by which you can convert your ADU into a condo.
You know, just looking at what you said, you mentioned something that, okay, no more, you could, you don't have to be a tenant in your own piece of property and your ADU would be an additional, that you could actually rent your primary house out and the ADU. So I'm just kind of looking fast, fast forward 15 years from now. The unintended consequences, like what you alluded, is that, you know, we're going to have, California is going to be basically renter occupied with out-of-state landlords.
It's possible.
And where they take their property, they go, hey, I'm time to retire, I'm renting this out, I'm dividing my house up in multiple ways, mini apartment complex, I'm moving out of state where they don't have to deal with this nonsense and they can, you know, live in the ideal area that this used to be. In the meantime, they're profiting off of everything that they've created.
Yeah.
I have a family member right now that just bought property off of Friar's Road in San Diego. And we're not talking about Lakeside or Ramona or somewhere remote, off of Friar's Road. And he's putting 10 ADUs on this property. And because it's, under the rules, it's within a mile from transit center.
Oh, right, right.
He doesn't have to offer parking.
Correct.
So there's going to be 10 units with one to two people in each one, no parking. And I don't know whether, there's no street parking available. And so you're going to see all this going everywhere, nowhere for people to park.
Yeah.
It's just crazy.
They've fallen in love with ADUs up in Sacramento, I can tell you.
It's paradise.
Yeah.
They're creating a no-car paradise, aren't they?
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah, it's--
Because every community looks like San Francisco.
Yes, yeah.
To be honest, it's been tough. I mean, those of us that have gone through this gauntlet of being planners, it's amazing what's happened just in the last few years compared to what it used to be.
So at what point in time does the, does here locally in Murrieta, that all these things kind of take place? And then it upends the general plan that was adopted by councils past, which we use as kind of the standard today. Hey, look, there's a shopping center here, there's an apartment complex here, there's, you know, a single-family house. At what point in time does this kind of upend the whole plan to where we got, now have to kind of relook at things because they're putting apartment complexes where it was never originally intended, that we need to kind of do amendments to that? What, what's the tipping point for us, where you're going to come back and say, hey, this is--
I don't, we're not there yet, but yeah, we're getting there, I would say. Yeah. I would--
You title, how do you title an ADU?
How do you title it?
Yeah.
It's, they're saying there's that ability to do it with a condo map, so I guess the subdivision map act, you can do a condo map. That's what they're saying. Yeah. So, yeah, it's tough. I did want to bring this, you know, this news back to you all. Sorry. So anyway, I did want to round this out. I think I have one more slide. So, little bit more on AB 434. So all these laws we were talking about on the previous slides, this bill also gives HCD enforcement authority on those new bills. So those new bills that just went into effect, they gave themselves a bunch of enforcement authority on, so just heads up there. And then 1485 was one that's really mind-boggling to a lot of people. It essentially, what the bill did was it said HCD and the Attorney General can intervene in any housing case that comes to court if they so choose as a third party. And I believe they've already done that since this went into effect.
Yes.
So they've created a state planning police, is what they--
Essentially, yeah.
And what's important here is where we used to be able to rely on, you know, whether or not the developer was going to sue us or not in a challenge. And they're, them making the cost benefit analysis of whether it's worth doing that or making the changes in concessions and dealing with it, which is the way it's always kind of been, we now have the housing police who are active. And even if the developer is on board, HCD can still intervene and step in and say, no, we're not going to allow this.
Yeah.
And they are doing that.
It's essentially HCD and the Attorney General working in concert on that. And that's essentially what the bill says. They can just jump into a case if they so choose. So they gave themselves that authority. So, last one, couple things real quick on financing and costs. I don't know, our fire marshal's still here. There was, there was, there is like a study that the state's going to do on this one staircase thing. I don't think that's an issue here, but in, in some cities, there were some problems with apartment buildings where there's only one existing staircase, and the fire marshal, state fire marshal was going to look at that. So it's kind of an interesting one, if he wants to talk about it. I don't know if you know about this one, Doug?
Yeah.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you. They actually, their goal or intent is to try and get away from having two stairwells. Of course, the fire service is opposed to that, and it's for them to save money on new construction, and they want to have just one stairwell. So as everybody knows, when fires happening, firefighters going up the stairwell, just like in 9/11, everybody's trying to come down. They had multiple stairwells, they want to remove it. Again, they're going to save a few dollars.
Yeah, thanks. It's, I'm glad the fire marshal was still here. Thanks, Doug. That was nice of you. There, the first one, the carbon emission one, that's another Weiner special, but that's really relates to carb and GHG emissions, so we can dive into that when we talk about the Climate Action Plan at some point, but I don't think we have time for that tonight. And then a couple parking ones. So interestingly, 1308 was one that it's basically, you can't have a parking requirement now, even if someone's just renovating their home. So some cities did have thresholds out there, like if I give you an example, say, and this happens in the coastal zone, I would say on projects I worked on, maybe the existing home is only like 2,000 square feet, and then someone wants to build a 3,000-square-foot addition and building like a 5,000-square-foot house. Some cities have requirements that say, oh, now you need more parking because this structure's bigger. State did away with that. Said, if there's, if there's a unit there, you're just doing renovations, additions, whatever, no, no additional parking requirement. We don't really have that here, but there are jurisdictions out there that that was a big hit. But this is the state again, trying to sort of loosen the reins on parking, which is, I know, a hard pill to swallow. The unbundled parking one, that really just gets down to, there was, in the state's eyes, there was a problem where there's units out there where people were renting a housing unit, and the parking space was required to be rented with the unit. And the state said, no, can't do that. If people want to rent a unit, you can't require them to rent a parking space as well if they don't want to. That's essentially what that bill talks about, 1317. And then 894, last one for the night. I know it's been a long night. Just more flexibility there in shared parking. The state's looking more and more at that, as you can imagine. Communities are upset about parking situations. State's looking to provide more flexibility on shared parking. So that's like when you have different types of uses and you're trying to use existing parking maybe out there between different uses. So they're trying to provide more flexibility there. That was the, that was pretty much it. So with that, I really appreciate all of you. I really appreciate all you taking the time. I wanted to hit on the stuff we talked about in the, sort of, the first half, and then I know you were all really interested in the bills. I had meant to bring those to you months ago, but I figured this was a good opportunity, so.
One last question with that, and how does this, all these laws affect maybe communities that might be governed by, like, say, an HOA, where it's not city rules, but their own elected rules that they choose to?
Most of the bills override HOAs. For example.
The ADU stuff.
Yeah, the ADU, the ADU bills, they outlaw, they, they basically overrode the HOA stuff a long time ago, like 10 years ago.
Like solar panels, like any of those things.
What about like 55 in older communities?
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
Okay, so none of that matters?
It's all, it's all based on zoning now. It's, it's.
Age-restrict, can't you? If you put an ADU.
I'm not aware of any change to the ability to age-restrict, but you can still have.
You can have ADUs in an age-restricted.
Correct. As long as it's, it's pretty much built, what, we went to a planning conference a few years ago where Senator Weiner spoke, and he did tell us essentially their goal was to get to a point where all the single-family housing in the state, everywhere that it's zoned in the state, he said this in the public presentation, was to have four units on every lot. That was his, that was his goal at the time. And essentially what you've seen come through in the bills is four units on every single-family lot in the state. That's, that was their plan.
Not even hiding behind the old slippery slope arguments anymore, it's just, it's just out there. This is what we're going to do every year.
So if properties are zoned single-family, that's what they want to, that's what they want to allow for.
You know, yeah, there's no give and take, it's a one-party rule system, so it just, they can ram things through.
So just moving forward, I just wanted to mention, and I know I've talked with some of you about this, my plan is to bring this to you early in the year each year, because there's so many bills now. The state does a record number of bills every year.